Next up are citizen's statements. We have, I think, sixteen queued up so far. If anybody else would like to make a statement before the board, there are bold and ratted sheets like this in the back of the room. Please fill them out and hand it to our board secretary, Laura Johnson. First up tonight is Julie Devault.
All, I'd like to ask for an accommodation. I have something to say, and then I also have a parent's statement that I would like to read. Thank you. Last Monday, there was an incident at UMS that resulted in a student being seriously injured. This is not the forum to discuss details of the situation. However, there are a couple of issues I'd like to bring to the board's attention. The district knew on Friday the multiple teachers and the possibility that subs would not be found, especially during a holiday weekend. I was informed by, on Saturday, by a possible sick-out by a parent from another district. By Sunday morning, I considered it a rumor because we had not heard from our district. The public was not notified until Sunday evening that the school was going to e-learning. This is a clear example of what the districts and parents have been trying to explain, of when the district has to make decisions, they don't look at all the players and how they are affected. While the district had an obligation to fill these positions and honestly tried, they also had an obligation to the students and the parents. The teachers made a stand for sped students, and yet the district did not hear them. It is evident in the lack, because of their lack of transparency. Parents had little over twelve hours to make arrangements for their students the next day. For a sped parent, finding daycare arrangements is difficult, to say the least. The district could have sent an email on Saturday morning informing parents of the possibility that Monday could be an e-learning day. That would have given more notice to parents to make arrangements. Then, if the district had found subs to staff those positions, parents would be informed and know to prepare their students that there would be many alternate teachers that day. It is about transparency and understanding your students' and families' needs. Number two, parents know that e-learning days are equivalent to lesser education. It's almost like a day wasted. I reached out to Beth Lad to inquire about comments that were circulating on social media regarding students with IEPs and 504s being affected by the e-learning day. Beth did reply with detailed information of the sped protocol with e-learning days. Without going into protocol, into the protocol details, the system failed. My student has one class that was labeled "e-learning" as per protocol. The rest of them were just normal assignments. Number three, as for the sick-out itself, parents with IEPs and 504s were proud to see the staff stand up for what is needed, change. That includes staff training and special education laws, training and medical protocols, student accountability, and meaningful, progressive consequences. They did not do this lightly. Your staff is telling you they've had enough. They desperately want to safely educate their students. They are frustrated. They continue to see the needs of their students not being met, tired of not having the supports they need, feeling helpless to a system that desperately needs to change, fear of knowing they are opening themselves up to possible legal actions for not being able to provide the accommodations and modifications that are legally binding in an IEP and 504. They are mentally and emotionally exhausted. Yet, most importantly, they feel unappreciated for their personal desire of being invested in their students. Teacher shortages and lack of finances are a real and serious concern. However, I need the district and the board to hear. That does not negate you of the district's responsibility to uphold federal laws and expectations. There is an ongoing problem, and it is clear that the district has all the intentions to correct it. Yet, what you have been doing is not working. We need change, and the district needs to involve parent and community agencies to be part of the solution. We have begged you for transparency and involvement, yet it still doesn't happen. On a side note, I work with many districts around the state. I want the people to be aware that, as flustered as we are with the admins and boards at times, Urbana has good people throughout their educational system. Dr. Jay, you and the board, I want to say to you and the board, thank you for always respecting your students by engaging with them and their families and in giving us a chance to hear our voice. Now, I would like to read a parent's statement. This is from the parent of the student in the incident the other day, last week. I would like to thank everyone who has supported my son. Thank you to the staff who took a stand for not just my student, but all sped students. The support from the community has been positively overwhelming. Please be respectful as I am asking for time in my family to process what has happened and work with my team and the district to make my son's health and education successful. Thank you.
Next up is Annie Bader and the Yankee Ridge staff.
My name is Annie Bader, and I am speaking on behalf of my colleagues at Yankee Ridge who gathered together to discuss our feelings and opinions on the upcoming decision that is to be made on April sixteenth. At this time, we would be remiss, sorry. At this time, we would be remiss not to recognize the recent events and acknowledge our support for the UMS staff and families. Once again, thank you, board, Dr. Ivory Tatum, and admin for the time and attention you have given the decision to create a dual-language school as well as putting out the new updated proposed redistricting survey. To reiterate what we said two weeks ago in our staff statement, we want to see the success of the dual-language program, and we are so proud that our district values bilingualism and has taken such major steps to protect and promote it. This evening, the Yankee Ridge staff would like to share some important information with the school board. As you know, spring conferences were last week, and our staff shared with families the updated redistricting survey that Catherine Tellez put out. It may or may not be surprising that numerous families had no idea about the upcoming changes. They responded with frustration and were upset about the news that their school may be closed next year. Parents and guardians asked why information was not sent home. Many of them spoke up and said they were not able to regularly access email and would have appreciated a more direct method of communication from the district and the school board. We understand that some vital communication wasn't out, but we also know this alone is not equitable. For example, elementary teachers are asked to send homework, newsletters, and permission slips on paper because many families have limited or no internet access. Teachers and staff are questioning why paper surveys and informational packets were not sent home with students. At the same time, elementary teachers have been instructed for the past three years to send home paper packets of materials for e-learning days to make learning opportunities equitable for all students. The lack of communication has left many families blindsided. Some questions and comments from families as they were holding back tears were, "Why am I just now hearing about this? Why is this happening? We love our school. Why didn't I get anything sent home about this?" Our school board is here to advocate for the families, community members, and stakeholders of our school district. Because so many of these important people are in the dark about the proposed changes, how can the board ethically vote on such a change that will affect so many? After discussing our whys as a group, we all have similar reasons we chose Urbana when many of us were offered teaching positions in other districts. We wanted to be part of a school system that celebrates cultural diversity and inclusion. We love the tight-knit community Urbana has to offer. We believed the Urbana School District mission statement. The mission of Urbana School District, number 116, a multicultural community committed to educational excellence, is to ensure that all learners acquire knowledge, develop skills, and build character to achieve personal greatness and help create a better global society by providing innovative, comprehensive programs, respecting individual learning styles and cultural differences, and fostering caring and nurturing relationships while engaging each student, every family, and the entire community. So why have we stayed here? We are here for all of our families, those who have been informed of the proposed changes as well as our families who are uninformed and underrepresented. We are here to work with colleagues that have become family, and we are here because we love our school, our students, and our community. We are so appreciative of the opportunity to come and speak openly to the board and central office members. We ask you to take a pause while you consider the voices of all families and the future of our entire community. Thank you again for all of your time and the space to clarify our thoughts.
Good evening. I have with me a couple of statements from teachers at Yankee Ridge that wanted to share their whys with you. I will read a couple, and then someone will read a couple after me. Many years ago, as I embarked on my teaching career, I was eager to join what I observed to be an amazing school community while looking for good, fit schools for me. I quickly found the grit and passion of the Yankee Ridge staff is unmatched. It's what makes Yankee Ridge special. Even over the years, as I have watched many amazing educators come and go from Yankee Ridge, one thing has always remained: the exceptional staff and the support we have for each other. We have grown together into seasoned educators through many difficult times in our school, community, and district. Our roots stood strong through many challenging times as we watched a stream of incredible educators leave for better conditions. Before now, leaving has never been a serious consideration on my part. I could not imagine myself anywhere but here with my Yankee Ridge family. We stay because we have each other. We stay because we know that there is nowhere else quite like it. I dedicated my entire adult life to Yankee Ridge, our students, and our staff. The job I love and believe in, its value, was taken from me without any say in my own future. Yankee Ridge, my home, my heart, my reason for teaching, will be closed to all of us who work so hard to foster our Yankee Ridge community. From a second staff member at Yankee Ridge. At the beginning of this school year, during the opening day meeting, District 116's staff was asked to think about our why, specifically, why education and why District 116. Over my ten-plus years with District 116, my why has changed many times. Initially, my why was wanting to make a difference in the lives of children. I enjoy teaching, especially seeing the switch flip in a child's mind and seeing their eyes light up when a skill they've been struggling with finally clicked. But for now and for many years, I spend most of the day dealing with classroom behaviors instead of turning on lights in the minds of children. Support either just doesn't come or a Band-Aid is used to fix an issue where surgery was needed. Many district staff and families would like to know your whys. Why have you not been transparent about district plans for the future? Why have you waited so long and delayed communicating with staff and families? Why are you not responding to our concerns? Why are you segregating the dual-language community from the general education communities? Why have you not supported us as staff? The majority of teachers are spending a very large amount of instruction time dealing with student behavior outbursts, taking away much-needed learning from the rest of the class. Teachers were chastised and lectured to from day one this year because test scores are so low. Turning one school into the sole dual-language school or redrawing district boundaries is not the answer to any of these issues. Where is the data to show redrawing lines will help alleviate classroom behaviors or bring up the oh-so-valued test scores? Currently, my why, and the why of many other staff I've talked to, has changed. It's changed to, "Why stay? Why stay somewhere I feel underappreciated, where I feel undervalued, and where I feel unheard? Why stay somewhere without support? Why stay without communication and without clarity? Why stay in District 116?"
Judah Frost.
Hello, I'm Judah Frost. I am in sixth grade, and I'm here to talk about my sixth-grade experience and my thoughts about a sixth-grade center. My team at Urbana Middle School that my mom calls Team Judah is made up of some of my team teachers, like Ms. Adam, Ms. Lawrence, Ms. Schenfeld, and there is Ms. Lexi, my heart of hearing or deaf educator, my sixth-grade principal, Ms. Riley, Mr. Rusty, and Al, and Ms. Malloy and P.E. slash help. They have told me that I can come to them whenever I need them, need them now and in the future. But since you are talking about making a sixth-grade center when I'm in eighth grade, they might not be there when I need them. I think that is a bad part of your plan, isn't it? Relationships are important. These are my people who help me feel safe and have been there for me every step of the way. It is very hard for students to start a new school, and this plan has every student starting a new school two years in a row, and then, again, two years after that. Please listen to the teachers at UMS, especially the ones that I mentioned. They are great teachers and know how to keep students safe in learning. I know that not everyone is safe in learning at middle school. I have an IEP that helps support my disabilities and has made me stay safe, thanks to my team. Thank you for listening to me. I love school. Please make a good plan.
Thank you. Next up is Mercy.
We might need some accommodation on time.
Understood.
You've got a cool floor. So try to shock him with a microphone. I'll hold this for you.
Hi.
You've got this. I can help you.
My name is Mercy Frost.
I go to Yankee Ridge. I'm nervous.
I go to Yankee Ridge. I, I am there for second grade. And I wasn't expecting for the classroom to be so wild. Sitting in a loud environment to be so tough. Sitting in It was better when you
I'm gonna read for her, because reading is really hard, too. "It was better at the beginning of the year when my teacher, Ms. Pio, was there." Is that right? "But since October, the class has been wild, and my friends and I think it would be different if Ms. Pio was here." "We had a lot of different substitutes at first, but the same one since November. I personally think it has been a lot more crazy, and it makes it difficult for me to learn because it is loud and people are moving around and screaming. My idea for fixing all of this is to get more help, like a teacher who has gone to college to be a teacher or who has taught a whole year of a grade before. This is what happened in my class this year. I think every kid in Urbana should have a good teacher so they can learn and have the help they need. Would you please work on a plan to make this possible, to be sure everybody has the help they need? Thank you for being on the school board to help our schools be better."
Thank you very much, Mercy, for sharing your thoughts. Thanks to everyone.
I'm Brittany Frost. Those two are mine, and I'm not against a dual-language building. There's evidence that dual-language buildings are supportive of student learning and other developmental outcomes. I'm not against rethinking some, something better for middle-school students. We need evidence-based solutions and practices. I'm against piecemeal solutions. I'm against either deception or arrogance. I can't figure out which it is, in the form of not needing evidence to inform costly, community-changing decisions. I'm against ignoring community and professional collaboration or devaluing it or not approaching it genuinely or with transparency. I am against not taking the time and effort required to do our best to actually address the needs of our community, even if that means owning up to mistakes of this type that have happened in the past. Our students deserve the best, our minds, our dollars, and our hearts can collectively build for them. I believe this board can lead us somewhere better than where we were headed yesterday, but it will require change, it will require taking a stand, it will require us working together." I have two more teacher statements from Yankee Ridge teachers. The first, "I was in search of a welcoming, inclusive, and diverse community to work in, and I found that in Urbana. I thoroughly enjoyed working in Urbana until recently. This year has been challenging, to say the least. I found an immense lack of support for teachers despite many pleas on various levels within the district. I felt unsupported and unappreciated. The constant struggles and challenges that I faced alone this year have caused me to make the difficult decision of leaving Urbana District." The second statement, "When I came to Urbana, I was excited to work in a unique, diverse, and multilingual community. Having worked in both Chicago Public Schools and suburban schools, Urbana seemed perfectly situated on the spectrum of educational settings. However, I quickly discovered that Urbana 116, while home to an amazing community, lacked resources and structure. But where my district failed me, my coworkers rose to the occasion. Informal networks of support and collaboration developed in the absence of official guidance. Teachers share everything, their plans, their ideas, their love. Everything amazing that has happened at Yankee Ridge is because of the top-notch human capital we have, teachers, staff, and students alike. Dismantling these connections, the only reason that many teachers have decided to stay and managed to survive, is threatening the best part about this district. To put it bluntly, without the people, this place is nothing. I feel I can no longer work as a teacher at Urbana School District 116, knowing that the only thing that has gotten me through the past few years will no longer be there. I can no longer pour my heart and soul into a place that doesn't honor the work of teaching and learning. I may be leaving, but my heart will always be with my students and colleagues."
Thank you. Next up is Chakir Kunti.
Good evening. I just want to make it clear that I don't want to be here tonight, and I know the people from Urbana Middle School don't want to be here tonight. So please, recognize that because we're here tonight, this is important. One of the recurring themes I've been hearing this evening is the lack of transparency, the fact that much information is not given to us that shouldn't be. Many at the middle school were really surprised when we were told we were going to get metal detectors. Many of us didn't know that weapons are being brought in the building. We asked for more information. We were told it was a confidentiality issue. We don't want names of students. We want to know what's going on. This district has the transparency of a tar pit. You need to work on this. The incident that occurred last Monday with Russ, it took us six days to get an official response from the principal about what had happened. Six days. The result was that we had a staff meeting yesterday morning, and we were told that there were going to be two new policies put into place, policies that had been suggested by staff at the beginning of the year. Then, we were treated to a review of all the policies that we have in place that would continue to be followed, policies that have proved ineffective. I think the most disappointing thing about yesterday was that there was no one from Central Office helping with this presentation. We were told by some from Central Office that the union asked that Principal Cooper do this presentation on his own. That's not true, and Mr. Foley can attest to that. We have a staff that's in crisis right now, in crisis. We need everyone there. We need a show of support. But instead, we didn't get that. I know that a principal oversees a building. I get that. But I know that people from Central Office know firsthand what we are dealing with there, have seen them in the hallways with the same frustration we have. Not at any point were any suggestions made from them about how to change things, new policies being made, nothing. We were left to flounder. You know, and yesterday, I don't want to bring this up, but there was one person from Central Office at our meeting yesterday. And at the end, this person came up and, in a condescending way, said that the policies that we have in place can work because the high school is making them work. We were told it's not rocket science to get things in place. I am not the smartest guy in the world. My dad has often said that I wasn't the sharpest tool in the shed. But this is not the way to work with people. We are constantly being told that all problems can be solved if we work together. When you insult the staff, when you belittle your staff, when you keep your staff in the dark, things will not be fixed. Today was better. People from Central Office were there. Things went well. It was a better day. Thank you for that. My concern, though, is that in order to get the help that we needed, a child with special needs had to get injured, and we had to stage a protest. What's it gonna take next time? I hope there's not a next time, but what's it gonna take to get the help that we have asked for all year? Board, please address this. Thank you.
Next up is Karen Hollitt.
Hi, my name is Karen Hollitt. I've been a special education teacher at Urbana Middle School for twenty-five years now. This is the first time I have felt the need to come and speak at the board. One of my jobs as a special educator is to advocate for students who cannot advocate for themselves. One of our students in the Life Skills Program is a well-known student in our building who is well-loved by all staff and students, brings joy to all he encounters in our building. He is constantly smiling and loves being at school with his peers. On Monday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, this student was transitioning to leave the school at the end of the day during class time, a timed plan for him to transition in the hallways safely. Well, he was not safe. His wheelchair was tipped, and his neck was broken, and he remained in the hospital throughout the week. This was a completely avoidable accident. I am very disheartened by the lack of response from our district administration. Emails were sent directly to admin on Monday evening and then again on Tuesday morning with no immediate response, never any written response. There should have been an immediate response by admin and by Central Office. I cannot state strongly enough how what happened last Monday has affected me, how it has saddened me and how it has angered me, knowing that this could have been prevented. A situation like this should never have happened and cannot A situation like this should never have happened and cannot occur again. Systems need to be in place that not only keep all students safe, but also hold everyone responsible for their behavior. Thank you.
Kia Alexander-Hayes.
Thank you. I'm Kia Alexander-Hayes. I teach seventh grade science at the middle school. I'm also co-chair of the science department. My concerns about the unsafe environment at UMS are well-reflected by my colleagues here tonight. I am here to provide an additional example of the outcomes of unsafe behavior being allowed to persist. In February, I sustained an injury due to the actions of a student in my class. I am still in treatment for and recovering from this injury. Unfortunately, this is the second time the student has been aggressive towards me, and the student has a well-documented history of aggressive behavior towards others. As we are failing to meet the needs of this student, they continue to act out in the same ways, contributing to an unsafe environment in the building. When I have repeatedly asked admin in our building how we are going to address the repeatedly unsafe behaviors of students such as this one, who is but one of many students who engage in repeatedly unsafe behavior, I am told that each incident and student must be taken into consideration individually, and that if the student has an IEP, the priority is making sure to follow that IEP. I understand this need and requirement, and how hard fought-for special education laws have been. But I do not understand why an IEP cannot be followed while also maintaining the overall safety of the building. My specific request in this regard is wanting to know what research-based methods exist for supporting students with higher emotional and behavioral needs, and how we are working towards or will work towards implementing these methods. Right now, we are not supporting these students, resulting in adverse outcomes for everyone. We are not engaging in the restorative practices that we tout proudly as Urbana School District. To me, it doesn't seem to be an acceptable risk to go to work or school and know that you may come home with a severe injury because that's just how it is in our building. Having a six-month-old daughter at home, recovery from the injury while teaching and taking care of her has been incredibly difficult. We do not know the health risks or life situations of those around us, and what seems like students just misbehaving or acting out can and has had life-altering consequences for those around them. My story is unfortunately not unique among UMS staff and students. We need the implementation of immediate supports to foster and maintain a culture of safety, where students who need wraparound support receive it, and all students and staff have the opportunity to engage in learning and just to feel safe at school. I believe the hallway safety measures being put in place this week are a start, but that they still don't address several of the core repeated issues that occur in our building. Thank you.
Karen Shelton.
Good evening. My name is Karen Shelton. I am a special education teacher at Urbana Middle School. And I stand before you this evening representing a group of dedicated educators from Urbana Middle School who are deeply concerned about the safety and well-being of our students and staff. Recent incidents have underscored the pressing need to address safety concerns within our school. The serious injuries sustained by a student in the hallways has brought renewed attention, as is evident tonight, to the persistent issue of unsafe conditions. Teachers have long voiced concerns regarding the need for assistance with hallway behaviors, and staff members have unfortunately suffered injuries as well. It's to the point where we encourage our pregnant staff members to stay out of the hallways, and we fear for community members that visit our building. In response to the ongoing safety concerns, several teachers and staff members made the difficult decision to call off for Monday afternoon to protest the unsafe working and learning conditions. Importantly, the majority of staff members put in their time before leaving work on Friday, contradicting the district's portrayal of last-minute staff absences and unforeseen staff shortage. That's just simply not true. We urge the school board to question the administration about how many staff members submitted their time off for class by Friday afternoon, how many had submitted them by Thursday evening.
Yep, Thursday morning.
It's crucial to challenge the misrepresentation of teachers. We are not the villains in this narrative. We're dedicated professionals committed to fostering a safe and supportive learning environment for our students. While we acknowledge the district's attempt to address the unsafe conditions in our hallways with a new plan, it lacks in establishing immediate consequences for unsafe behavior. Furthermore, it continues to unfairly blame teachers for issues such as excessive passes. The core problem extends beyond this. It involves students engaging in unsafe behaviors such as running and horseplay in the hallways, as well as refusing to attend class or leaving without permission. These behaviors create an environment that undermines learning and jeopardizes the safety of both students and staff. We urge the school board to take decisive action and collaboration with teachers, staff, and the administration to develop a comprehensive plan that addresses the immediate safety concerns in our hallways. This plan must outline clear consequences for students who do not comply with the outlined expectations. Without solid enforcement and repercussions for noncompliance, the same issues will persist, undermining any efforts for improvement. The current plan appears to be a mere repetition of existing strategies which have proven ineffective. Our students and staff deserve a safe and conducive learning environment, and it is imperative that we work together to achieve this goal. After all, it is not rocket science.
Cora Matheson-Stonk.
So, a couple months ago, a knife, like two knives, and I think two guns were brought to my school. And I want to know how you're going to prevent that.
Hello. I hadn't actually planned on talking tonight until my daughter, who you just heard, came home to me and said, "There's been another fistfight today in class." And I asked her, "So, honey, how often does that happen?" And she said, "Well, it's not every day, but I don't go out to recess anymore, so I haven't been really keeping track." And I spoke with our superintendent and the president a while back about, you know, we recently moved here, and not long after we started at Yankee Ridge, my daughter was assaulted in the schools. And it took two weeks for me to get a proactive response from anybody in the administration. And I was then, at that point in time, directed to the resource officer who covered the elementary schools but was housed at the middle schools. And she, what my takeaway from that was, is that the violence in the school district is pervasive and unrelenting, and nothing is really being done about it, nothing will be able to be done about it. And I continue to be baffled by how that is acceptable in this day and age. At one of the recent events at the, I think it was at the high school, when we had one of the public sessions, I spoke with Dr. Ivory Tatum. And there is no strategic plan at this point in time. The most recent strategic plan was 2011 to 2016. And the board has elected to make all of these changes without having a strategic plan. And I think that is really short-sighted, because without a plan, these problems will be persisting. And what I have seen so far is this violence, there's an extreme lack of discipline and respect in the student body, which is also a little bit stunning. The teachers that I know are amazing. One of them, my daughter's teacher, is in this room, and we love her, right? And the after-school program staff that I know are all amazing. And so it's also shocking to me that this is continuing to happen. My son is in Mercy Frost's class, and so my son, Monday morning, was telling me he did not want to go to school because there was so much screaming. It hurt his ears and he couldn't stand it anymore. So, I now have ear protection for him to go to school so he can handle the screaming. But then that means he can't also hear the instruction that he's going to be getting from this long-term sub that is that one of the nicest people you will ever meet, but he is not supported by the schools or the district. He's not prepared for this. He's not prepared for the chaos. Or the other students in that classroom that I have heard have been threatening to kill the adults in the classroom. So, without a strategic plan, how are you going to be addressing the issues that we are seeing with violence in the schools, with the poor academic performance? Because what student can concentrate in that situation? I couldn't concentrate in that situation. I don't know about anybody else in this room, but I doubt they could either. I mean, if a fistfight broke out in here, that, you know, would get everybody's attention, right? Like, then you have to refocus. And if you're, you know, a kid that's still trying to learn how to control your emotions and your own response, how can you do that? These teachers are not meant to be, you know, managing these fights either. I mean, how many of them have had training to do that? But, you know, without a strategic plan and without addressing some of these issues, you are going to be expending resources that it sounds like you really can't afford to be expending unwisely. So, it sounds like you've already been losing a lot of human capital, right? And so then, there is effort that's need to be put into hiring and training, and you're going to be losing that collective wisdom that was mentioned here today. You're also going to be losing a significant amount of public goodwill, right? And public support for the projects that you do want to do. But also financial resources, because it sounds like there's some serious grounds for litigation against the district, right? If students are getting their necks broken in school, like, that's a problem. I think we can all agree on that. And so, I understand that changes need to happen. I understand that the schools are overcrowded. I'm not saying there doesn't need to be redistricting, and I'm not saying that something doesn't need to change, because clearly something needs to change. But I think it would be the best use of your time, our time, everybody's resources, to do it strategically, to look at what the problems are, go and try and solve those problems, rather than making these changes that you're currently facing.
This will be short, and I kind of can feel a little bad. Everything's been so serious tonight. But I think it kind of, it's something that's important to all of the decision-making. I am very concerned about the speed at which the board is making many very important decisions while we only have six board members. A while ago, we changed our election procedures so that board members are elected by sub-districts. We did that so that all community members would have a more equal voice in how the schools manage the issues facing the entire community. Right now, one-seventh of the population does not have a voice in some of the most momentous decisions that have been made in a long time. Having a voice does not mean just voting. Having a voice means that the representatives of those community members has all the information that the rest of the board has. I assume that this information is more specific than what is told to the community. On the Facebook Parent Group page, there are redacted emails about the numbers of students in different buildings. These numbers are being used to make decisions. I am assuming that a board member would have access to those numbers, whether or not Central Office wanted the number shared with the greater community. After all, it is important to have all the information for the board to make an informed decision. Having a voice also means having an opportunity to ask questions of the administration and having those questions answered, having those questions answered, as well as being able to be part of the discussion when the board and Central Office are defining the issues, defining the issues, and designing the solutions. I really hesitated to come here tonight because I'm the one who had applied to fill Ravi's seat on the board long before the original closing day. I will tell you that since I applied, I have laid low. I have tried to stay informed, but not participated in much of the discussion surrounding the issues. But I believe that no matter whom you choose to fill the position for Sub-District Two, that that person must have the opportunity to have all the important data and the opportunity to get questions answered before that person votes. So, I think that we need to slow down a bit.
Emma Aaronhart.
If UMS staff called in sick as a form of protest due to the lack of Central Office support and inaction, I want to thank them for their courage and advocacy for their students. Our leadership's inability to act to correct the behavioral problems in the middle school is dumbfounding. I agree with the sentiment. We need to act now to correct the problems in the middle school, but not in a new building. Let's start with enforcing the policies already in place in the middle school with consistency and accountability. I ask the Central Office and the board, listen to all UMS staff on what actions can be taken now, without a sixth-grade center, to improve the middle school for the current students and staff. Switching topics, but on the same theme of poor leadership, the timeframe for the single dual-language school has not been approved. So why is the board being asked to approve the dual-language principal for the 2024-2025 school year tonight? There is a tremendous amount of distrust in frustration with the community. Delaying this vote to happen after the redistricting vote, just two weeks away, would do a lot of good in restoring some community trust with Central Office and the board. But again, an exaggerated urgency is claimed, and decisions are occurring out of order. I've expressed concerns previously about the fact that RSP projections for the dual-language program are projected as a flat 463 over the next five years. But my worries are only compounded by a recent Shambana Moms article that references a January 2024 enrollment of 440 Spanish dual-language students and 59 French dual-language students in elementary schools. If this number is correct, we have already surpassed the 463 projection and are over the target capacity of both Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine. The program is expected to continue to grow due to an influx of immigrants. How are we going to address their needs in an overcrowded school on day one? This is why I am, again, asking for a strategic plan. You asked for our trust in Central Office, but trust is earned, and quite frankly, they have not earned it. Their inaction and inability to present a coherent plan with real data to support how it will address Urbana's extensive problems has only fractured community trust. One way the Central Office could begin building trust is through transparency. But we are not even given that courtesy, even when it's legally required. Illinois State Law requires, quote, "All records pertaining to the creation, alteration, or revision of attendance units shall be open to the public," end quote. When a community member requested these records through a fuller request, USD 116 redacted directives they gave to RSP. How is this transparent? How is this trustworthy? Central Office seems set on disregarding data to implement changes that are proven to hurt student outcomes, namely overcrowded elementary classrooms and buildings, and additional transitions, all of which will bleed into the middle school. Please enforce the existing policies in the middle school and create a strategic plan before implementing unsupported actions. Thank you.
Lydia Ruth.
Hi, my name is Lydia Ruth.
Hi, my name is Lydia Ruth. I am a student at Yankee Ridge and I'm in fourth grade. I decided to speak even on account of the likeliness that you won't take any of these thoughts into your final decision about where all the elementary students will be next year. Or maybe you'll surprise everyone with yet another wild and hated idea when you are done trying to close yet another elementary school. It would be easiest, more efficient, and smarter to leave everything alone, at least until you have a plan with input from students, teachers, parents, and other people in the community. My mom likes to say anything worth doing is worth doing well. You are not doing any redistricting or rearranging buildings well. Stop. Ask students, teachers, and parents what they actually want, then make a good plan that answers all the questions people keep asking. But none of you sitting there are answering. Instead of listening to students, parents, and people in the community, what you are doing is stressing out families, teachers, and other staff and tearing apart friendships. Is that what you want, to be the cause of all of that and more? Also, you have been keeping everything very secret, though you've promised transparency. We don't know the next step you are going to take. And right when you all decide, it is final, without input or help from the willing-to-help community. The community is willing to help and they have great ideas if you could or would actually listen. Central Office administrators and board members could even come to our schools and talk to students. We have lots to say and many creative, better ideas. I have been in the French dual-language class for five years, and I have now been faced with a difficult decision along with my stressed family and many other families. Should my siblings and I in French stay in French dual-language and continue my second language? Or leave the program so I can be with my monolingual friends and teachers that I've known a long time and feel comfortable around? I love the French dual-language teachers and my teachers who do not speak French. Same for my friends and classmates. I don't want to lose any of them, but your bad ideas will take me away from one set or another, and that, that is heartbreaking. These decisions will make a lot of teachers want to leave Urbana. If they stay, it will be a hassle to move. Students who normally walk blocks to school will either have to take a bus or walk over a mile to school, no matter what the weather is. Don't you all care about the students in Urbana? Not just some, but all of them, and what their educational experiences are like? Do you? Or do you take in account the parents and all the work they have done and will have to do? Have you? For now, you can just leave everything alone and eventually take the best ideas from the community. That is a smart idea for what to use your money for. Please, please stop all decisions until there is a detailed plan. Thank you for your time, and I really hope it'll make a change.
I really have to stop following that. I know I've been here a lot, but I hope you know it's because I care so deeply about this district and desperately want it to succeed. I have four kids between first and eighth grade and a spouse who teaches here. To say we have invested fully in what Urbana has to offer its community would be an understatement. To President Polaski, I wanted to say thank you sincerely for our conversations and for being willing to float the idea of having a discussion with the board around our survey and its results. At the last meeting, the board concluded it would set a bad precedent to allow me time on the agenda to discuss surveys. Quote, "In an effort to make this more of a conversation, I would ask board members to send questions so we can have something closer to a dialogue." Thank you for the suggestion. Unfortunately, I received zero questions. There is no dialogue. We are still shouting into a void. President Polaski, I also wanted to thank you for bringing up the recommendation at creating a committee to directly and independently serve the board and providing community feedback and attitudes, because I honestly think that may be the only way to even begin to restore what fractured trust remains here. The board needs to have access to information and feedback from the community it serves, not filtered through an administrator or given in cherry-picked or anecdote-sized data. And President Polaski, I'm sorry that by bringing that up, you ended up getting publicly reprimanded by your superintendent, who said, quote, "I wish you had shared that with me before you talked about it publicly." You have every right to bring up what matters the most to you and the board, and I hope that you will continue to press to make that happen. I'm now going to stay laser-focused on this survey, and despite receiving no questions, I will continue in good faith to share the results and what I think are necessary next steps. First, a little bit about me, because I have to change hats here. I'm still a citizen and parent in Urbana, but I'm also a data guy. Look at the shirt. I have a PhD in Educational Organization and Leadership from the University of Illinois with a specialization in Quantitative Analysis and a subspecialization in Measurement Theory and Survey Design. I head the Data Analytics Group at Geese College of Business, where every day our team is creating, running, and analyzing survey data, enrollment data, outcomes data, and helping our college lead the way in being a data-informed and data-driven organization. This is my sincere passion. I could happily talk your ear off about all the things that data analytics can enable and improve for you. I offer that service to you free of charge if you are willing to take me up on it. This is an offer to both the board and district leadership. Again, I want this to succeed. It is with this data hat I present to you the findings of the survey. With limited time, I really just present the high points. As of February 24th, 2024, the Urbana Community Survey had gathered 294 total responses, utilizing surveys in English, French, and Spanish. The survey focused on major questions faced by the board today around facilities and district moves, the replacement of an elementary school with dual-language school, the use of Wiley as a sixth-grade center, and an additional idea that has been floated around concerning the conversion of Wiley into a dual-language school and thus not disrupting any prior elementary school. 171 respondents of the 294 were parents, 65 were staff members, 10 were students, and the rest were Urbana community members or future Urbana parents. With all respondents combined, the idea of replacing Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine with a dual-language elementary school was only supported by 12.2% of the respondents. 70.4% were not in favor, nearly six to one, with the rest not having enough information to form an opinion. For the sixth-grade center concept, only 18.7% supported it, with 58.8% not. Changing Wiley to a dual-language elementary, however, had 53.4% support and 27.6% of no support, nearly a two-to-one favoritism toward the concept. It was the only concept that got any positive results from among all respondents. Among just families, support for replacing an elementary with dual-language drops from 12.2% to 11.7%, the sixth-grade center from 18.7% to 17%, and Wiley as a dual-language school grew from 53.4% support to 59.1%. When looking only at dual-language families, 40 of the responses, support for Wiley as dual-language grew even more to 65%. Dual-language families supportive of replacing Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine stayed only at 17.5%. I could go on, but there's more of the same. The concepts proposed by the board are vastly unsupported by the survey. When respondents are given the ability to choose neither, instead of RSP's Option A or Option B for elementary schools, they chose it in droves. So now I want to turn to a couple of other questions from the survey that matter here. We asked respondents to rate how much they felt Central Office and the board cared about their opinions. Rating from a scale of one, not at all, to five, they cared greatly or care a lot. 55.4% of all respondents rated Central Office a one, and 29.8% rated the board a one. The ratings of five only reached 2.7% and 3.5% respectively. Among dual-language families, not a single respondent gave a four or five to Central Office. I probably don't need to reiterate here how dire this is in terms of trust and feelings toward our district. I also don't think that forging ahead will create any improvement. In fact, it could shatter it completely. Finally, and most critically, questions of the staff. 60% of elementary staff and 56% of all staff indicated they would not stay in the district if they were reassigned. It's heartbreaking. If the recent events at the middle school weren't evidence enough, there is a crisis here at the district. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Hi, so I'm a parent who just moved here internationally with three young kids. Now, I wasn't planning on coming and talking or even participating at all in PTAs or any of this because I have a full-time job and I just moved here internationally. And I have been so dramatically confused by what is happening here. And so I've done as much, I'm a researcher. I've done as much research as I can to figure out what's happening. What is happening in this community? Why are all these changes being made? So I think clearly moving sixth graders to its own school is drastic. I've never seen any evidence showing that that would be healthy, to isolate sixth graders. Building a dual-language school, drastic. Changing, closing down a neighborhood school, drastic. So clearly, it seems obvious that changes this large would never be done without a very clear and open strategic plan. Showing, it just seems basic and straightforward that you would never make such massive, drastic changes without showing what are the problems that we're aiming to resolve? And how are we showing that these drastic changes will actually resolve the problems we've all agreed upon are the problems that need to be resolved? I don't know why I can't find any answers to these basic questions. So my kids, I have three children. Two are in Yankee Ridge. They're twins, second graders. One has been in a class with a lovely teacher that has no support staff. Total chaos in her classroom. The second had a lovely teacher who left. We got no information whatsoever about her being gone. Her class, multiple substitutes and total chaos. You've heard from other students in her class. My son in Urbana Middle School, the first day of school, coming from another country, first day in America in school, a massive fight broke out a foot away from him. And he's a peaceful, peaceful boy. To see that in his first day in middle school and multiple fights since in his classes, three out of his four teachers are substitutes. In his core classes, my children's education has just dramatically been crashing in this past year that we've been here. It's wretched. So I've been searching for answers for what is happening in this school district. And I want to take the popular phrase that's been thrown around today. It's not rocket science. We need a transparent and strategic plan. What are the most urgent problems that we're trying to resolve? Where are the well-researched plans showing that they will be resolving those problems? Aimlessly carrying out dramatic plans without any evidence to show that it will actually solve the most urgent problems is wrong. And it's not rocket science.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sam Vandergrift. I've lived in Urbana since 1997. I think it's a pretty great place to live. This is our 12th and final year at Yankee Ridge Elementary School. It has been a wonderful place for my kids, and I'll say really up until this last year. But I also want to say that to say that the changes that are proposed to the elementary school and the sixth-grade campus aren't actually going to directly affect our family. What is directly affecting our family is the decision-making process that's being used right now that is at best opaque. And I'm deeply concerned about the way that that is preventing other changes that need to happen in the district from occurring. I've been asking myself a couple of questions. One of them is, is urgency one of our core values, right? We seem to be like marching towards a new school system arrangement. Like, we seem to be, we're going to redistrict, damn it, and we're going to do it now. But it doesn't seem like we really want to tackle the things that are happening in the day-to-day in our district in a way that really matters. I can think of maybe two fights that happened in the time my daughters attended Yankee Ridge up until the beginning of the school year. And now I've heard at least two or three a week, right? And that's just in fifth grade. That's not the rest of it that's happening. I think a lot of our social bonds collapsed during COVID. Certainly, if you look at people driving 110, I sound like my mom in this, right? Those people are so fast. But if you look at the way people are driving, rolling through stop signs, et cetera, there has been a fraying of the social fabric, right? And I don't think that political bodies that are supposed to represent the populace modeling behavior that is disregarding what people are saying is a good way to model what representative democracy looks like. Many of us are saying that there's no merit to the ideas that are being presented, right? In the conversations that I've had with board members and the conversations I've had with parents in the district, et cetera, I think there is value in looking at redistricting, right? And I think there is value in looking at what an alternative model for middle school should look like, which, let's just be clear, right? Middle school is a hangover from the Baby Boomers we've never gotten over. We've never thought really critically about a way to do that. If you want to be innovators, think about a way to remodel middle school in a way that ameliorates those problems that we have that are inherent in a model where you put those diverse kids together. I'm going to save my Smart Elec comments for later. I do think, and when we're talking about urgency, I do think it is certainly more appealing to think about big lofty ideas instead of nitty-gritty stuff, like putting more teacher aides in classrooms. I don't think that's any fun. And I don't think that sitting down and looking at reading data is really very exciting. But it didn't seem to keep you from remodeling the way that you're going to deal with reading specialists next year, right? That seems to be a decision that was made in the dark and, as far as I can tell, is completely unsupported by every reading specialist I've talked to. In fact, none of them even seem to think, hmm, that's an interesting idea. They're like, why would you do that? So the big thing that I've been thinking about, and I've been thinking about this kind of as an existential way, right? What is the value in local government these days, right? When we're sitting down and looking at the new kind of feudal lords of technocracy coming in and making it so that we're just subscription servers to whatever's happening in their, like, global pantheon? And I know I sound like a whack job with a tinfoil hat, but there's quite a few books about the kind of march back towards feudalism that we're going to. And I sit down and think about the immediate attacks on democracy by about 38% of the country, who seem to think that, like, critical public institutions like courts don't matter. I look to people in this room who are my neighbors in my community, right? And I'm going to look at each of you and maybe see some eyes, right? But you are supposed to be listening to us and making decisions that are data-driven, value-based, and for your community, and hastily making decisions, rushing through decisions. I'm not saying you don't have good motives in the back of your head, but you've been asked time and again for a strategic plan. At least tell us what we're doing, right? The federal government shuts down if we don't have a budget. At least put us a plan together before you decide that you're going to move so many kids in this district, before you decide that you're going to upend a model in middle school that, albeit may not be perfect, at least has kind of gotten by for a long time, right? Let's sit down and think about what some real goalposts are that we're going to be able to create measurable outcomes with, and then how we're going to sit down and measure what those outcomes look like in ways that are meaningful to the people in this room. You owe it to yourselves to know what that looks like before you make decisions as big as these. And I promise you, right? I've done a lot of visioning workshops for organizations I work with in my consulting work, where we sit down and do the dreaming work. What does your five-year strategic plan look like? What is it you want to be when you grow up, right? We ask these questions of our kids. At least through that process, you will all have a clearer idea of where you stand on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. So hi, my name is Freya Vandergrift, and I go to Yankee Ridge Elementary School. Just for starters, I would like to say almost all of us, well, no, we need and deserve a strategic plan. The school district numerous times have made decisions that have put people, everyone, on uneven ground. For example, the closure of Wiley. You moved families from their school and proceeded to say that you would not move them again, yet you will, when you most likely turned Yankee Ridge into a full dual-language school. And I would just like to state for the record that everyone knows that Yankee Ridge is most likely going to be the dual-language school. Because Thomas Paine has resources that that no other school has. I'm going to switch topics completely here. So I'm a fifth grader at Yankee Ridge, and I have witnessed several, several fights. And you guys are trying to focus on redistricting, doing a sixth-grade campus. And you guys are trying to focus on redistricting, doing a sixth-grade campus, full dual-language school. Why don't you, why don't you focus on actually putting support that we need in the classrooms? I have, um, I have, in my grade, I have had someone bring a knife and two guns. How do you think that makes me and all the other fifth graders in this school feel? We most likely and probably feel unsafe along with the teachers. Why are you focusing on not getting support that we need? There have been times, there has been one time when I've been at lunch recess, and there have been three or four fights going on at once, and we have had three supervisors out there. Who do you think's going to break up the fight? Because like three or four going on at once, yeah, they need to pay attention more. We do not have enough staff. We are understaffed, and we are, we probably don't even have enough money to make this sixth-grade center happen. I don't know. But what I do know is you guys need to fix it because it is not safe in classrooms, and you are making it unsafe. Thank you.
I'd like to give two statements left. The first one is from Troy Walton. If anybody else would like to be seated before the board, there are still golden badge sheets in the back there.
Good evening. I was a former Wiley parent before Wiley Globe, so Yankee Ridge, I'll stay with y'all 100%. I don't have anything written down. Somebody brought it up earlier, you know, the why situation that we were all asked, know your why at the beginning of the school year. Jesus, give me strength. I didn't know my why until sitting in this room. My why goes back to when I was in kindergarten. And I was terrified of leaving my house, leaving my home and going to school. My kindergarten teacher was named Mrs. Smith. I will never forget the connection that she had and made me feel safe. I am a sped TA at Urbana Middle School for now, in the sense of I don't know what will happen, I don't know my future. However, I, as a sped TA, do not feel safe in my school. Transparency has been thrown out, unsafe has been thrown out. My issue is there's no accountability. None at all, 100%, none. We have teachers getting injured. We have students getting injured. We have students threatening staff every single day. We have students cursing out staff every single day. No accountability. Zero. There are staff members definitely that do not want to be here tonight. There are some that are not here tonight. There are staff members that don't want to speak up. So by God, I will be the voice for the voiceless. There is a problem in our schools. My why is because of relationships, building relationships. I'm in education to help the next generation. But when the next generation decides to quote-unquote spit in my face and there's no accountability for it, that is a major issue. Honestly, I came up in Chicago Public School Systems, never seen anything like this. 100%. Kid does something wrong, suspended, expelled. Point-blank simple. I don't know what it is that has changed over the years. We've been told that it's because of the state. We've been told it's because of this. When states state certain stuff and you have people that know what the state law is, and you all refuse to act on it. Let's be real about it. I'm not going to throw out big educational words, I'm just going to be real. 100%. It's an issue that is being ignored. It's an issue that is, that is not, that is being taken lightly. A kid is allowed to injure a kid, get suspended for two days and come back to school. Why? I'm going to ask tough questions. And like I say, I don't know my future after sitting here today. Then when you have people that speak up and stand up, they feel targeted. That's one reason why they want to speak. However, there is a big issue in the school. When you have kids that threaten teachers, you have kids that threaten staff, you have kids that just curse them out, and there's no accountability, and they just look at you and they know nothing's going to be done. Brought out the class, so what? I'll be back in the hallways in less than an hour. At what point do we get hurt? At what point does it stop? At what point do we devise a plan other than what we've been asking for since the beginning of the school year? Yes, this is on my second year in the school district, but at what point? I go home every day. There was one day I walked out of the building because of how a kid treated me, and I know nothing was going to happen to that kid. I walked out because I couldn't be the 100% that I knew I was going to be. I went home and cried in the arms of my wife because I got sick and tired of nothing being done and feeling like I'm one of the only ones that care about these kids. Because the mental strain of when I go home, I have a six-year-old and a three-year-old, and the moment I ask them to do something, and they don't do it, I see one of these kids at Urbana Middle School. It's mentally unsafe, physically unsafe. So I'm asking, fix it, but put better solutions, make the problems better. So I'm asking. I don't think that's too hard. Hold accountability. 100%. And yes, again, I'm speaking up for those who didn't want to speak. We're tired of the disrespect, the cursing out, the kids running the fight, the kids threatening us. Tired of it. Just please fix it.
Thank you for speaking your truth. So I just want to commend you for coming forward, and I also want to state unequivocally that this board will not tolerate anybody being preponderant for coming to this meeting and speaking. Encourage all of our staff to come here and speak their truth, and thank you for doing that tonight.
Brian Harris Howard.
Hello. I'm an SRS at Urbana Middle School, and throughout the days, each and every day, we tend to deal with the kids right here. Our admin gets pulled in different ways as far as subbing and dealing with different situations, so they leave us SRSs to fend for ourselves. We don't get the support that we need from our CLs and our admin throughout the day most of the time. There are kids that be in the hallway that shouldn't be in the hallway. We do our job as far as tell them to go where they need to be at. We get cussed out, we get told they can do whatever they want, they have IEPs, the follow enforcement, this won't happen to them. Only thing that they get is a period of refocus, and they're not doing anything in there as well. Honestly, I don't know what to say besides I grew up in this district, I wouldn't even let my kids tend to this district. There are kids that are in sixth through eighth grade that cannot spell independent. There are multiple SRS staff that have asked kids to spell independent. Somebody told me E-E-N-D-E-P, that's the most they could get out of independent. A word you learn in the second grade. I know at King School, we had spelling contests. We had worksheets that we'd get sent home at the elementary, got our time, made sure that we was at the level that we need to be at as far as education-wise. And on that today, I don't know what it is, but we holding our future in our hands, and we're failing them. The students, they could do whatever they want to do without them being punished. They know that. They could bring weed to the school, they could smoke weed in the bathrooms. The most they're going to do is get talked to and probably sent home for a day or two. But when we do something, we always being punished to the max. They let these kids do whatever they want to do, but when the staff tend to want to take a strike or something, it's always some backlash with the staff. And we tired, honestly, we just tired. We tired of going out of our ways to help kids that cuss us out, nothing happens. We tired of going our ways to help our admin, and when something tragic happens, they always falling back upon us. We're the getting paid, we the fallback on, because they don't want to take responsibility for their actions of what's been going on in their school. It's always the SRS is this, the SRS is that, our teacher's not doing this, teacher's not doing that. Our teacher's tired, just like we are tired. We tired of being their backbone and not getting that paid, the extra dollars that admin's going to pay to do what needs to be done for our school. That's all I got to say.
Hey, everyone. First of all, I want to start by saying thank you to all the teachers who showed up tonight to talk to you because I think it's really important that you hear their voice. Can you guys hear me okay?
Closer to the mic.
Closer to.
Four to six inches.
Closer to the mic. Okay. So anyway, thank you, teachers, great job. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mark Foley. I'm here right now in the role as Urbana Education Association President. I want to start by saying thank you to the board. I know that this is a volunteer position, and it's very fraught sometimes, and you may feel like you're the target of a lot of animosity or anger, and I know that you are working really hard, and I know that you are going to do what the best of your ability to solve the problems in this district, so thank you. I also want to say thank you to the central office staff. I know you guys have been kind of the target here today, and I appreciate you and the work that you do. I do want to say that while there has been a lot of illustration of the issues in the buildings, right, and I am somebody who in my role has to go to every building a lot, I don't think that you're getting a, you're not getting the wrong impression. Okay? So I think that sometimes we can say to ourselves, well, people seem really upset, they're being hyperbolic, they're exaggerating. And I don't think that's what's happening here. I think you really do need to listen to the teachers and the parents and the students who are here to tell you what is really happening in the buildings. But the question really is, what are you going to do about it? Right? And I want to suggest to you that, first of all, I really think as a board, you should consider, if you haven't already done that, getting a consultation on the SB 100 law that was passed by the state of Illinois a couple of years ago, because that's something that you are legally responsible to understand. And I know this might be a little bit difficult to hear, but you are legally responsible as the Board of Education to make sure that the employees and the students in this district are safe in their workplace and where they go to learn. So this is actually your responsibility as the elected board of this town. You should be aware of SB 100, and you should be aware of what it tells you that you can and cannot do. I am not an expert on it, but I'm pretty well-trained on it, and I can tell you that one of the things you should consider is that if you have students who are continually presenting problematic behaviors in a school, they need support. Right? So it is very easy for many of us to want to punish more, to have more suspensions and want more expulsions and those kind of things. And I understand that impulse. As a teacher of 27 years in this district, I've had that feeling myself several times. I guess I should also say I have three kids in this district, and it's been a great experience, actually. It's a wonderful district, and I'm really happy to be here. But I will say that I think the one piece that's kind of missing here, and one thing that you could do that might make a big difference would be to look at support for the students who are continually repeatedly demonstrating behavioral problems. What do we have for those students? Like if a student comes in my room and swears at me, and the student is sent out, and maybe they get a day in-school suspension, and then they come back the next day, is that going to change the behavior of that student? I don't think so, and I think what you've heard here today is a lot of frustration over people who are dealing with the same problems over and over and over again, and just need to know what you, school board, are going to actually do to fix those problems and to get these kids the help they need. Now, this is my suggestion, and again, you guys can figure this out because it's not, at the end of the day, my responsibility. It's not the union's responsibility to solve this problem. The union's responsibility is to protect our employees and their workplace, and right now, these employees are not feeling particularly safe. Right? And that is a legal problem for you. Okay? And what you saw yesterday at the Urbana Middle School could become a bigger thing. The union had nothing to do with that, we didn't organize it. But I will tell you that the frustrations that those teachers felt and that made them act that way is not like isolated to the Urbana Middle School. There are other buildings in this district that feel similarly, and so it is something that needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed in a real way so that the teachers and the families and students in this district understand that you're listening and that you're doing things to make changes. One of the things I would suggest, and this might not be particularly popular, but I think it's actually true, is you go back to that student who cussed me out in my classroom, and then they leave, and they're gone for a day, and then they come back. What did we do for that kid? And if we don't have an answer for that, because an SI at the Urbana Middle School has 125 referrals a week that they have to deal with, you have three, I'm going to just ignore that. Does it keep beeping? Just stop it beeping, John. Anyway. Thank you. Sorry, I'm going to stay privileged because I'm the president of the union, so I'll just take an extra minute, and I'm sorry. I never come here and do this to y'all, so you're welcome. But I do really think that what you have to look at is that piece. What are we doing for these kids who are repeatedly demonstrating these problematic behaviors? And if we don't have an answer to that, then the district has an obligation to make sure that you are putting into place pieces that will address those behaviors. If you have a SI in the seventh grade who has 125 referrals a week, you need more SIs. If you have three social workers in a building where you have, I don't know, 300 referrals a week, you need more social workers. And I know that that sounds like an easy answer, but I'm telling you, what's the real issue here is that the students who are causing these problems are not getting the support they need. It's not going to work to just keep suspending people and keep expelling people out of this district. It's not a good look for the district, and honestly, it doesn't really address a lot of the behaviors. These kids need mental health professionals sitting down with them and figuring out with them, why are you acting like this? And what can we do to support you so that you can make better choices in school? It's not on the teachers, that's not the job of a teacher. Teachers don't get hired to be counselors, and actually, that's in your collective bargaining agreement, that's specific language. It's on the district, and eventually, it's on the board to make those kind of decisions so that you can get the people in these buildings to get these kids the help that they need. And until that happens in a real way, and that's going to require money, and that's going to require more positions, and I know that HR works really, really hard to staff these buildings. It's not a choice that anyone's making to like not have TAs in different rooms, but social workers, psychologists, SIs, these might be people that we could get. TA positions can be hard to fill, teaching positions can be hard to fill. It might be surprising how easy it could be to get social workers in this district, especially in this community, which has a lot of social workers. So I want to encourage you to think about positive steps you can take as the board to really address this issue and not just let us vent, and then we're all going to go, and we're going to kind of go back to the way things were. Things need to change systematically, and one of the things that probably needs to change is that you need to look at social workers. I want to stop by saying again, thank you, because I know this is a somewhat thankless job, and many of you probably regretted signing up for this in the first place, but I think you've done a really good job of hearing us, and it's important that people had a chance to express what they believe and what they know is true to you. So please listen, because I think that that is the kind of core of the issue for a lot of us, is that sometimes we feel like we say things and we don't get heard until something more drastic happens. And so if there's ways to figure that out before anything else drastic happens... And so if there's ways to figure that out before anything else drastic happens, we really appreciate it. But anyway, thanks everybody and have a good night.
There will not be a call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? The move is seconded and all. Uh, we do have a series of action items tonight with the end of the year. The set of administrative personnel items. So we'll, we'll let the room clear here.
We have a device.
It's a 39.
It's on.
All right, uh, thank you. Moving on with, with our set of action items. Seven dot one is a set of administrative personnel items. Can you give an introduction?
Sure, Dr. Taylor, do you want to come up front by the microphone? As part of the district's administrative restructuring, the Executive Director of Leadership Development position was posted earlier this spring. The primary responsibility of this role is to support and evaluate building principals. On Tuesday, March 26th, Dr. Taylor was interviewed by a committee of USD administrators and UDA members. Dr. Taylor was selected as the most outstanding candidate for the position of Executive Director of Leadership Development. Dr. Laura Taylor earned a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree in Photography from the University of Illinois and Master's in Special Education from the University of Miami, the other U. A doctorate in Educational Administration and an advanced degree for Superintendent Endorsement from the University of Illinois. From 2009 to 14, Dr. Taylor was an adjunct instructor at the University of Illinois where she taught such courses as the Principalship, School Improvement, and the Political and Social Context of Schools to educators seeking a Master's in Certification in School Administration. Dr. Taylor comes to us from the Champaign Unit 4 School District where she has served as Deputy Superintendent for the past 12 years. Sorry, my font, I had to make it like super big because I can't read as much. There we go, okay. During this time, she supervised numerous district-level leaders and served as an integral part of dozens of district-level leadership initiatives. She directly supervised the Executive Director of Operations, which is transportation, food service, and operations and maintenance, the Director of Data and Accountability, the Director of Technology, the Executive Director of Special Education, and the Director of Teaching and Learning. For the past four years, Dr. Taylor's primary responsibility is the direct supervision and support of all 18 principals in Unit 4. She spends significant time, significant amount of time in schools balancing requirements related to the evaluation, coaching, supervision, and provision of other supports for principals and their administrative teams. She is a key leader on the superintendent's cabinet representing principal needs and working with colleagues across departments to build systems and supports in service of school leaders. Prior to her district-level leadership, Dr. Taylor was the principal of Urbana High School for six years, after three years serving as the Associate Principal of UHS. Dr. Taylor often states that leading UHS was by far the most favorite part of, of her over 30-year career in public education. Along with her team of administrators, deans, teachers, students, and families, Dr. Taylor implemented highly impactful school improvement initiatives that cleaned positive outcomes for Urbana High School students. Prior to becoming an administrator, Dr. Taylor taught students with disabilities for five years in Champaign Unit 4 and for five years in Miami, Florida. Dr. Taylor is extremely excited to come back to District 116 and serve the Urbana community that has meant so much to her personally and professionally. So I'm asking for the board to approve Dr. Laura Taylor.
So also there's a set of administrative personnel items. Is there a motion to approve the set of administrative items?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote would be in order.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Langendorf?
Yes.
Vice President Hexum?
Yes.
President Blowski?
Yes, welcome back.
Very, very excited. I'm getting a little.
I wrote it down. I really appreciate, I wrote this down, I need to, because I think I'm just gonna call. I'd like to thank the Urbana 116 Board of Education, Dr. Ivory Tatum, for this incredible opportunity to come back to the community I love and serve uh, in what I believe actually to be an extremely important role. Building leaders, specifically building principals, are critical in terms of creating welcoming, inclusive environments steeped in high expectations and academic rigor for all. Having a position specifically designed to support increasing their capacity and leadership development shows that Urbana understands that strong building leaders lead to improved student success. When I learned that this position was here, I did have tears in my eyes. It, it really was a fluke. I'm just gonna be real honest, I was doing some other things and there it was. And I thought, you know, here we go. Um, but I'm thinking of the possibility of returning to the district where I not only started my administrative career, but I also attended here as a student, which I don't know if any of you know. I went to Lille, I went to Urbana Junior High at the time, who is middle school now, and Urbana High School until my junior year when we moved to Miami, Florida. Memories of growing up in Urbana and serving as principal of the high school are really filled with peer joy. It, it's, it was the best time of my career. I've loved my career and it is 30 years, I can't believe it, more, thirty, more than 30 years. But my most impactful, I think, my most, um, strongest initiative in terms of school improvement, my most strength in leadership capacity development happened there. I learned it and I used it and it's now, we're all from that. I want to thank all of you again for the opportunity and look forward to making a difference back on this side of Rice Street, Rice Street, oh, divers.
All right, Patricia. The new dual-language principal position was posted earlier this spring, but the location is still to be determined. On Monday, March 18th, Ms. Patricia Valente was interviewed by a committee of USD staff members, students, administrators, and community members. Ms. Valente was selected as the most outstanding candidate for the new position of Dual Language Principal. Patricia has a rich background education, particularly in the realm of multilingual and multicultural educator instruction, excuse me. Her most recent role was the Multilingual and Multicultural Director at Rantoul City Schools, where she played a pivotal role in redesigning the district's multilingual program. Prior to her time at Rantoul City Schools, she served as a multilingual, um, teacher or instructor in several school districts and universities, including Waukegan, Barrington, Leclane County, Unit 5, Illinois State University, and Milliken University. She has been in education for more than 20 years. Patricia holds a Bachelor's of Arts in Teaching and a Master's in Pre-K 12 Administration from Illinois State University with a specialization in multilingual education. Her expertise extends to presenting at various conferences such as the Literacy Research Association Annual Conference, the National Associations of Bilingual Education Annual Conference, Illinois State University's Culturally Responsive Campus Community Conference, and Equity Inclusion in Action Summit hosted by the Illinois Association for Gifted Children. Her professional interests revolve around culturally relevant pedagogy, incorporating student testimonials, engaging multilingual learners and their families, developing a continuum of multilingual services, and providing instructional support to maximize student opportunities. Patricia has contributed extensively to educational literature, co-authoring chapters in Brain Science for Principals: What School Leaders Need to Know edited by Linda L. Lyman. She's also co-authored articles such as Mementos de Cambeau, Cultivating Bilingual Students, um, uh, Epistemic Privilege Through Memoir and Testimonial and the International Journal of Multicultural Education with Dr. Laura Hansfield along with co-authoring in the Journal of Language Arts an article entitled, "The Many Shapes and Possibilities of Learning With and in Community: Connecting Across Literacy Educators in Context Collaboration and Pedagogies of Closeness: Humanizing Small Group Comprehension Instruction." It is our pleasure to recommend Ms. Patricia Valente to be the next arc, to be the first Dual Language Principal in the Urbana School District with the location to be determined.
So the board's already voted?
The board's already voted, so if you have anything you want to share, you just hit the little button until it's green.
Hopefully the battery didn't die.
No.
Just press and let go.
What? Or hold it down?
Yeah, just press and let go, press for two seconds.
There's a delayed response, which is you have to press it and then wait about a second.
And then bring it a little closer.
Okay, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be part of this new adventure in Urbana School District um, as a new Level 3 Dual Language Principal. I have always looked at Urbana as kind of my, my, I idolized Urbana because you've always been trailblazers, twelve, trailblazers in the multilingual arena in central Illinois. And I've always kind of dreamed of being part of the leadership of Urbana in that space. I also, I, I applauded Urbana's boldness and bravery, bravery to support equitable education by coming together as a community to support what is best for all, right? I embrace your dedication and perseverance in creating a place of belonging for everyone. I, and family, students, and staff. I'm excited to lead this team and look forward to the year ahead. So I know, I, I applaud your bravery. I know it's not been easy and I appreciate being able to listen to all the parents and being able to hear where everyone was coming from, really important in the decision. So I'm excited to be part of interacting with the community and walking alongside everyone here and making even greater changes in Urbana. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, welcome.
And last, Ms. Katie Madigan.
But not least.
The Urbana Early Childhood School Principal Position was posted earlier this spring. On Tuesday, March 18th, Ms. Katie Madigan was one of four candidates interviewed by a Level 1 Interview Committee of Urbana School District Staff Members. Following the Level 1 interview, Ms. Madigan was one of two candidates invited for a Level 2 interview. Ms. Madigan was selected as the most outstanding candidate for the next leader at Urbana Early Childhood School. Ms. Madigan, Katie Madigan began her educational career in the Rantoul City Schools in 2004 as a speech-language pathologist, serving kindergarten to fifth-grade students at Broad Meadow Elementary, East Lawn Elementary, and Pleasant Acres Elementary. She spent five years in this position before moving to the role of Pre-K Coordinator and Speech-Language Pathologist at Unit 7 Schools in Tulon. At Unity, she worked to lead a high-functioning pre-K professional learning community that served at-risk students from all five of the towns in Unit 7 Schools. She's also worked as a speech-language pathologist for pre-K and kindergarten students. Eventually, her role expanded to include working with first through fifth-grade students with speech-language needs at both Unity East and Unity West Elementary Schools. During her years as a speech-language pathologist, Katie worked part-time as a clinical supervisor for graduate students in the Speech-Language Pathology Clinic at the University of Illinois. In 2017, the Speech-Language Pathologist position opened up at Urbana Early Childhood School and Katie found her home. She spent three years in this role before transitioning to Assistant Principal for Early Childhood and Elementary Special Education Facilitator. Katie has served Urbana in these roles for the last four years. Katie received a Bachelor's Degree in Speech-Language Pathology from Northwestern University in 2002. She then received a Master's Degree in Speech-Language Pathology from Illinois State University in 2004. After working for several years in the field of educational speech-language pathology, she pursued her Master's Degree in Educational Administration from Eastern Illinois University, which she obtained in 2012. Katie lives in Urbana with her husband, high school-aged daughter, and two adorable dogs. She enjoys sports of all kinds and volunteering. She has served as a volunteer on multiple PTAs for the Junior League of Champagne, Urbana, United Way, Crisis Nursery, Carl Hospital, and Moms Demand Action. She is proud to be a part of the community that she also serves as an educator. Congratulations, Katie.
I didn't have a lot of things prepared to say, but I just want to say, honestly, this is my dream job. I, um, joined the Urbana School District seven years ago as an employee. And I have loved every minute that I've been here and just really dreamed of this moment that I could, um, become the principal of early childhood school. So I'm really excited. It's funny that Dr. Taylor's here tonight because I actually shadowed her when I was doing my administrative internship when she was still the principal of Urbana High School. So I'm excited to start this new role alongside her. So, um, thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm, I'm super, super excited to be here and, and hopefully stay here for a long, long time.
Okay, uh, next up on our list of action items is adoption of a consent decree in the EOC versus Urbana's 116 case. So this is, um,
Yeah, I don't, can you do have anything except up here? Yeah, a board member's got an email from our attorney kind of detailing all the details.
This is the, this is part of our settlement with the government.
Yes.
Is the acceptance of this decree. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the consent decree.
I move for approval to accept this.
Second. So move in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, a roll call vote is in order.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Langendorf?
Yes.
Vice President Hexum?
Yes.
President Blowski?
Yes, and, uh, last of our actions tonight is an adoption of a memorandum of agreement with the Urbana Education Association. Uh, this is, this is in, uh,
Related to the EOC.
Yes, related to the EOC, so, um, is there a motion to accept the, approve the memorandum of agreement? It's a move consecutive, any further discussion? Again, a roll call vote is in order.
Member Stanton?
Yes.
Member Langendorf?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Vice President Hexum?
Yes.
President Blowski?
Yes.
President Blowski, can I, who excited, did you hear who seconded?
It was Sherri.
No.
No? It was Setlal.
That's okay, thank you.
I misheard, so thanks for clarifying that. That's our action items tonight. So next up finally is our Student Ambassador Report. So thanks for your patience, gals.
Um, this is the Student Ambassador Report by me and Divisca. Um, awareness. Um, first we have the word of the day, which is horizontal hostility. It's basically where one oppressed, um, or marginal group, um, is against another oppressed or marginalized group. Um, I often see this a lot at UHS, unfortunately, which is kind of weird. Um, and basically they just like, they try to put each other down or like, they're like in competition with each, with one another. Um, yeah, that's not, it's not always the best thing to see. And basically, um, they like try to assert dominance or superiority over the other group. Um, but our mission as people and authorities should be to do everything we can to avoid this by implementing inclusive activities and teaching students to be respectful and to unify others and introduce them into multicultural, um, points of view and things like that so that they don't try to do this. Because when I was in elementary school, we weren't introduced to a lot of minority groups, which grew like, at least like in, when I was in school, we weren't like, I was just like, because I was in the dual-language program, so we weren't. so we weren't introduced to other minority groups. It was basically just like Hispanic culture, Latin American culture, stuff like that. So we weren't really taught to be inclusive to people who weren't like us. So now, in school, it's like the Hispanics are kind of like, almost like bogus people who are not Hispanic a lot of the time, especially like white people. And it's kind of just like, we're all human. And so I feel like just like introducing more multicultural topics and community and stuff like that, ways of unifying everyone, especially implemented more at a young age, like when you're kindergarten, stuff like that, because that's when things really get rooted in your head. Having more of that would definitely help, especially more of that in the dual-language program.
So April is Autism Awareness Month. And we just want to wish everyone a happy Autism Awareness Month, sorry. We want to celebrate diversity and inclusion, and we want to focus on understanding and accepting people with autism. And it's a chance to learn more about autism and support these amazing individuals.
Happy Arab-American Heritage Month. This month is about recognizing and celebrating Arab-Americans and their cultural, history, and experiences. Make sure to stop by Arab restaurants and businesses near Urbana, like the Swarma joint, probably. Banban Diner, Dubai Grill, Naf Naf Grill, and others. And continue to show your support and kindness towards this ethnic group. Recognizing students. The bioracial recognition program is coming up where students get recognized for volunteering and they get congratulated for all their hard work. And basically, the mayor gives them credit for all of their help they have done to our community. And I know a lot of people have expressed interest in this, and so I look forward to attending. So even if like people that you know or you missed a day to sign up, don't forget to miss the celebration to witness a bunch of students get recognized for their effort. And there's also a lot of other resources and groups and tables for this program and event that like give knowledge, information, support, and appeals like interests or your children or your students and like culture, different cultures.
All right, some student shout-outs. We have, we have sophomore Madeline Lefrano and senior Kyla Jourde. This past weekend, Madeline Lefrano and Kyla participated in IEA, and they are Zone Five finalists. And Madeline advanced to nationals the following month. And Kyla also reserved champion squad, and she got second place, which also earned a trip to nationals. So we want to congratulate our students.
Sports and clubs. The first topic is Ballet Procorico, which is a dance club at the Urbana High School where students like learn and perform traditional and historic Latin American and Hispanic dances. This group is super important to the Hispanic and Latinx community and participates, and is also welcoming to just like anybody who wants to just like try a dance style or hang out with their friends. And this is all due to Hannah Manch, who is dedicated, very, very dedicated, and very hardworking. And so shout out to Hannah. Yes, we are very grateful for Ms. Hannah. But we also don't have a lot of funds or like really any money at all. So if you would like to donate to our club, please email me. Thank you.
For track and field, the four-by-two-hundred relay team shaved 2.5 seconds off their season record, and they were to be taking third place in state. And then the team, that's the team with the picture here. And then the four-by-four team, which was Marley, Yow, Boilayow, Sinaya, and here we go, broke the 2018 UHS indoor school record and finished third at state. And the group beat their season best by four seconds. So our amazing track and field team is making advancements in the high school and creating records. For color guard, they having, they're having... They're having... Sorry, I'm sorry. I don't know. It's been on my brain. April 8th through April 11th at 6:30 to 8:00. And the color guard is basically in marching band, and they wave flags and do routines, and it's just a really involved group activity. And it's really good, and it's a very like family-oriented team just to be on. So if you know anyone who's just really coordinated and likes flags and colors and to be on a team, this is going to be like a great opportunity for them.
The UHS Mariachi, Mariachi Tigres de Cumbana is what we're called. And it's a joint mariachi between the Urbana Middle School and the Urbana High School. And they learn, teach, and perform traditional Mexican and Latin American music by musical instruments and vocals. The club members are fantastic. They're very driven, and they're very willing to like celebrate all different types of music and culture, even if they're like not Hispanic. They're still like very willing to do that. We have people from Asia, and we have people from all different, all parts of the world. Like, we have people from Cambodia, too. And we have white, black, all different types. And everyone's just very welcoming, and like the spirits are always great. So it's just, it's a very fun club. But we do need some instruments or music sheets. So if you know of any of those or uniforms, you can email Ms. Gingold or me. Yes, that's my email. UHS Band and Orchestra.
The University of Illinois Superstate is basically like a competition where like very high-playing bands are awarded to be played at Crater. And Urbana wins to me, I mean, I mean, that's what you did. We were awarded to be, to play at Superstate, which is like a really big deal. And you have to like submit a video, and it's just like a trial, basically. So we got into that. And we'll be performing May 3rd in our 1A class, and you should come. It's a very like competition-oriented thing, so. Yeah, it took a lot to be in this, so it's just like a great honor.
I'll make this a little shorter. Basically, I reached out to the students, and I was like, do you guys have any concerns or things you want the board to know? Just like, I think you're grateful for anything. You were just like, hey, this needs to be improved. And one thing that they said they really stressed was that the orchestra and choir room needs like a lot of improvement. First of all, like, it's really hot in there. Like, we had mariachi breaks in there, and everyone was sweating because the air conditioning was spewing out like really hot air. And then we couldn't get the air conditioning to work. And the students are often complaining that it's super small. And so then I went in there during orchestra, and it's like, it was like really tiny because like everyone was cramped in there compared to the size of the huge band room. And also, there was like, all the instruments and chairs and people in orchestra were like so tightly like together. And I was like, oh my goodness. And then there's also, it's also super unclean due to student reports of that, and also from my own experience in when I was in choir. There was always loads of dirt, like everywhere and like unclean areas most of the time. And there's also been mice, and my room was about one time. So overall, the orchestra and choir room needs more maintenance. Yeah. Food.
Parent-teacher conferences were held last week, and our UHS students offered their time to assist the conferences with food. There were 130 meals that were ordered, and teachers who not, that was maybe teachers who might have not had enough time to have meals delivered. And we had students like Colin Booth, Kiara Voughtman, and Yolli, I don't know why that like autocorrected, but we had those students to help, and we really just appreciate their efforts to be overachievers and help the teachers.
Quest Food Management Services, just specifically for lunch. The food has like improved so much. Like, there's so many more options. There's like salads, sandwiches, cheeseburgers, to like loads more options. And they always come with sides of fries or tater tots or onion rings. And then there's like a large variety of fruits or like extra little things. And then there's a lot of vegetables, and then we get pita bread with hummus every single day. Like, I don't, I can't remember a day there wasn't pita bread and hummus for every single lunch period. And every single one of the things, they just ate it for like every single lunch period. So like, it's really good. Like, like, we, like, every student is like, well, like, every student that doesn't go out for lunch is like in line, like, lines are so long. And so we just would like to thank Quest Food Management Services so much, and also the school board and all of you guys for providing us with this amazing new food services program. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you both for coming to such a great task, and job. We don't have any study topics to lay. Those are, as, either administrative reports, excuse me. RSP associates for district.
Okay, so our consultants have been patiently, patiently awaiting in Zoom, and John is bringing them up right now. So Robert Schwartz.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me already?
Can you get a little louder, Rob?
Yep.
Yes, a little soft.
Great, good evening. This is Rob Schwartz with RSP. Is that a little bit louder for you?
Yes.
That's much better, thank you.
All right, wonderful. And are we going to drive the presentation on your end, or do you want me to share the screen and go from our end?
We'll drive it from here, if that's okay.
You bet. All right, so as we look at this slide, and I do want to take a moment, myself and Jenna Wallace will be presenting the information to you this evening. And I just want everyone to know, with all this information you see up here, our team is a complete dedicated staff in the disciplines of planning, demographics, statistics, and GIS, which is mapping. So that's where you get the flavor of the information that we put together. If you can please go to the next slide. The way we've addressed this meeting is to give you an overview. So I know as board members, you've been very much in tune with the things that have been happening over the last few weeks. But I want to have this opportunity for the rest of the community, if you had not been paying attention or were not aware of what was going on, that I can bring you up to speed with some of the things that have happened to get us to this point here on April 2nd with the board read. Please, next slide. And the next slide after that. What I'm showing you here is the initial process that we started out on. And so I want to give a shout-out to the board, the administration, and the public because we changed this a little bit as we moved through this process. So as we go to the next slide, please, that'll get you with what we ended up doing. So we added an additional administrative meeting and public input and Board of Education conversation. And I believe that was much needed, specifically coming out of those February 28th and February 29th public input meetings. There was a lot of information discussed. There needed to be some time to look at some of the changes that could be made. And I'll talk more about that. Jenna will get into the surveys. But being able to be more confident with the direction that each of these concepts were leading to this evening and then eventually to April 16th. Next slide, please. So some of those elements I haven't mentioned that really did get expanded is more public input, specifically a second survey. You'll hear a lot of information about that second survey that I think shed some light on maybe some different groups that, what was that message telling me? All right, for sure. So many different things changed with the public input from different groups that we didn't hear from in the first survey. Please go to the next slide. The other thing that I want everyone to be aware of is wrapped around this entire process are these three gears that are necessary to understand how we're going about making some of these decisions. We have to keep in mind academics, that's the top gear. We then have the middle gear of culture, and then the bottom gear of economics. All three of those are important as you look at any of these decisions, whether it's creating a dual-language school or relocating students to other developments. These are important, and these are many of the elements that we heard in the public inputs in person and through the survey. Next slide. Some of the objectives are outlined here that came from the Board of Education. And you'll see specific dates where the board made some decisions, whether it was related to the dual-language or what was going to be considered for dual-language schools. So between Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine. You'll see some things on here as well as the sixth-grade center opening in 25, 26. All of the data that we've been putting together has related to the dual-language opening in the 24, 25 school year, so this next school year. Let's go to the next slide, please. Some of the criteria that RSP uses, because we did prioritize this with either the board or administration or even the community. But these are some of the metrics that we can look at any of the concepts and understand what does this mean. So are the areas contiguous, meaning they're all together? We don't have islands. Right now, we look at your existing elementary boundaries. We have islands. Looking at what demographics are that's related to where students live and their type of students specifically live. Duration of boundaries. Some of the conversation we've had is to create a plan that should be four to five years or longer with some of the changes that are happening with demographics and developments. Fiscal consideration gets into the capital cost. We didn't want to create a plan that exceeds plans that you have for actual building changes, the physical buildings. Fiscal considerations gets into the operational costs, so the staffing, that neighborhood intact. That means something different. If I'm closer to a building, I may say everything around that school is my neighborhood. What we tried to look at statistically was neighborhoods as it relates to, let's say, the legal description, the plat, the type of developments. We'd say that entire area goes to a building. Projected enrollment building utilization, trying to match up the enrollment with what the capacity is. That sometimes can be a challenge when we get into the different programs. And I think one of the elements that has been mentioned is with the dual-language being kept at this 463 number and saying there's more than 500 students, what we factored into the enrollment and utilization is there are different programs that relate to French or Spanish, or in the case of ESL-intensive students, which are at King. That gets you the total number of the 500-some students that are receiving these type of services. So they're not all going to be at one of the dual-language schools depending on the concept you choose. So that's how some of the things got factored in to the enrollment and building utilization. Students impacted by a boundary change. And we showed you those visuals as we looked at this year's kindergarten through fourth grade. How are they impacted as they move through first through fifth grade? We addressed some of the challenges with the widely closing and some of the promises that were made, but would not be able to be upheld with the dual-language. And so we showed you that in transparency. Transportation considerations. That gets into how does the situation look for the students getting to school and then getting back home when the school day is over? Acknowledging that if we make a building that's a neighborhood center, like Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine, into a dual-language, there's going to be a difference if you live around either of those buildings into a dual language, there's going to be a difference if you live around either of those buildings to going to a now assigned building for regular instruction if you're not in the dual language that would be in either of those buildings. So transportation is a component that administration has looked at and what that may mean for some of the busing and routing and what that could be for next school year. Next slide, please. All right, so back on December 5th, we had a conversation with you, the board, to just get a sense of what your thoughts were as it related to a neighborhood proximity to schools and balancing socioeconomic. In this vote, there are 12 votes. Obviously, there were, there's only seven board members on December 5th. So people that were in the community were allowed to vote at this particular meeting. The goal of this was to get a sense of what was the board thinking, knowing that when we put a dual language in a building that has a neighborhood boundary and kids going to that school around that school. What should we be thinking about as far as a preference of how that might look? Please, next slide. All right, I'm going to turn now this over to Jenna and she's going to walk you through some of the things related to the in-person and the survey and how you can be able to understand what that information means as you get to your decision.
Perfect. Thank you, Rob. My name is Jenna Wallace with RSP. I'm going to walk through some of the different avenues of input we have received throughout this process. First visual here is a timeline graphic that we put together to illustrate how our different items of public input have worked starting in February 28th and coming to tonight's meeting. So our first night of public in-person events, starting in February, where we opened up our survey number one. You'll remember when I proposed and presented the survey results at the first March board meeting. And the kind of input from that meeting as well as some other public requests coming out of the survey in-person event was for an enhanced public feedback opportunity and to reopen the survey. And so starting with March 26th, we had hosted a third in-person event and a additional survey that we're calling survey number two. So some of these main themes that were extracted from all three in-person events are listed there on your slide as well as our survey number one, which received that 263 responses. What I'm going to spend some time is going through our results of survey number two. This survey had increased support, so big shout out and thank you to district administration and our different building consultants that did a lot of effort of reaching out to different communities and bringing up that survey into multiple avenues of pre- pre- survey and backpacks so that we had an increased participation of that 527 total responses. Go to the next slide, perfect. This visual here, something we just want to talk about, is our different avenues of public input and they're all weighed equally. So our different avenues between if it was a verbal conversation at the in-person events, if it was written feedback provided at in-person events versus if it was survey feedback from the first survey in February to March or the second survey from March 26th to April 1st. All of that feedback was taken together and then analyzed together as one option. So all the different ways that we did try to get feedback and take that into consideration is going to be how we led into the revisions to Concept One and Concept Two. That will probably present after this part. Go to the next slide. All right, so looking at our survey number two, we ended with 527 total survey responses over this about one week period. Very similar demographic of roles that you guys saw in survey number one. So the majority of responses were parents and current students. And the school that I had the highest identification was with Yankee Ridge Elementary School. And we did have 116 total survey responses indicating they have to leave in the current dual language program. So an increase of feedback from the population that would be currently served in the dual language program. Go to the next slide, please. Very similar visuals here, so I tried to use all the same typographic as what you guys received in the first survey to utilize in this survey number two in our demographics. Some of these high level things that we just kind of want to look here with the demographics is we did have increased participation in our Black African American as well as Latino Hispanic community. So a greater share of those percentage of responses as well as just general responses, almost doubling the number of responses we see in our first survey. For the elementary school identification, I'm looking at the bottom bar graph where Yankee Ridge as well as the number of people that chose not to provide an answer to the elementary question had the greatest support for the greatest number that identified with that school of our survey responses. So similarly to last time, anyone could select blank. They weren't forced to answer all the questions on the survey. So we do provide the number of blank responses to each question to be transparent with the results of each question. You go ahead to the next slide. All right, so getting into some of the 12 responses and the support of our survey that we have found. In this case, in Concept Two received more support than Concept One, about 54% support. Survey in that survey number one in February 28th to March 15th, Concept One had slightly more support with a smaller sample size. And it was a much more even distribution between support where in the first survey, there was about 10 votes of support more for Concept One versus in this concept or in this survey, we're seeing about 100 more votes for support in Concept Two. Some different demographics that we were able to pull from this, we'll visualize in the next slide. But one of the key items is just looking at the respondents of those that selected that they were involved in the dual language program and provided that, in this case, 56% of those supported Concept One while 34% supported Concept Two. We provide some different sub-group material on these slides. And these go through to illustrate the differences of looking at our different subgroups as well as knowing that with the increased participation and the support for Concept Two, the majority of those supports also identifying with Yankee Ridge or blank. They didn't provide a school identification for those numbers. But when we kind of pull out and analyze between our different subgroups, so dual language involvement, Hispanic Latino population, as well as those individuals that took the survey in French or Spanish language, we had more of a support for Concept One. Go ahead to the next slide. So going into the next two visuals are the similar questions that you guys received in the first survey where we asked what these strength and strength bits were for each concept. And in this case, we have responses indicate that there was more support for strengths in Concept Two. In about every category, the one item that was the dual language program location was pretty equal with 148 votes of support at Yankee Ridge, 151 supports of support at Thomas Paine. And then the very similar number, we're about to leave comment that we will provide in the comment analysis a little bit later. Next visual here goes into the concerns of the concepts presented. So also very similar to survey number one, so with a larger sample size and with revised concepts, we're still seeing those same general themes of concern, so leading into the disruption of students, the proximity, safety, and travel time, especially from those coming from neighborhood schools and potentially on a different area and maybe a different drive time from what they are currently experiencing with their schools. Perfect. This visual here goes into our comment theme that we received in this survey. So we did receive less comments than we did in the original survey. So of the 527 survey responses, 153 of those provided comments. So that was about a 29% of the sample size provided comments that are going to be illustrated in these many takeaways. So only captures about 30% of the input from the survey while the other 70% did not provide the optional comments in these different avenues. Reading through these different comments and trying to categorize them into themes, we extracted some of these main themes of our impact to our current students and our current programmings, the equity diversity and socioeconomic distribution of students between the two concepts, the transportation and the potential impacts of travel time for some communities in the district between Concept One and Concept Two. And then the request for more community input and alternative solutions between the different comment. Final slide here, just some main takeaway that we wanted to call out. So that first survey from the 28th to the 15th, it did have a smaller sample size. And so that was why we did kind of update the process in doing a more targeted approach of communication with our survey number two. In survey number one, Concept One was slightly more favored with different input flows really bouncing back and forth between the two concepts. In the second survey from March 26th to April 1st, we received more support for Concept Two. And there was an increased participation, especially in our Hispanic, Black African American and dual language populations. And when we look at the survey results from those different populations and pull out more of their results of the survey, we had Concept One more favored. And then similar comments that was created in the second survey as the first survey. We do just want to kind of highlight is the bottom bullet point. So looking at the different board guidance that Rob walked through as well as the past work actions, many of the comments and many of the requests for changes to the process would require board action to work against that. So we're looking at the use of Wiley School next year, the dual language consideration as well as the choices between Thomas Paine and Yankee Ridge. And then the preference to maintain our neighborhood schools or balancing socioeconomic. Those are those boundary objectives that set the stage for this process that would require some different board action to change and would result in very different boundary concepts. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Rob to kind of bring all this back in of how we use these different avenues of public input to revise our Concept One and Concept Two.
All right, thank you, Jenna. If we can please go to the next slide. What I'm going to take you through is first right setting with our current boundaries. So up on this screen right now are the current boundaries, quick identification in the map. There'll be an inset in the bottom left that gives you the entire districts. We zoomed in to where the core number of students are and the solid colors represents the attendance area that those areas would go to school at for elementary. I just want you to acknowledge as you look at the screen, there's many different islands specifically north of University that are evident in our current situation. Next slide, please. We have the existing enrollment forecast with the current situation for each of the buildings. And again, I want to just bring to your attention with the way things are happening with your students. DVW would be over capacity and we have King and Thomas Paine and Yankee Ridge that are under 70% utilization. Another thing that I want to bring to your attention that came out of the public input comments and that was how can we be so definitive on a percentage utilization in whether it works or doesn't work with, let's say, 85%? So where you see cells that are in white, that would mean that the district administration would be able to successfully work with the programs that would be in that building. Where it's green, it would be below 70% and where it is orange, it would be greater than 85%. So again, we're trying to be in that 70 to 85% to do really two things. When you look at this is one, to account for some of the transitivity and demographic shifts that are happening in each of these attendance boundaries so that if you need additional section for third grade or first grade, we would have that space in that building. That means we'll have longer term boundaries. The other piece to this is there may need to be other social support spaces in that building. When it's in that optimal range of 70 to 85%, we have that flexibility in the buildings. So you clearly can see here with DVW, we don't have that situation. The bottom table gets at what the demographics are for each of the boundaries with the current enrollment. Go to the next slide. This map illustrates where students are kindergarten through fifth grade to heat map. And so where you see those red clustering of areas, that's where you have the greatest number of students. Notice how much red there is on DVW. This is one of those elements that supports the idea of having these students with a neighborhood school. Next map, please. We also have mapped out with the current dual language students and where they reside. So if we go up to the north side, that's belovedly known as the helmet area, you can see those large red dots indicating that's where we have the greatest density of Spanish speaking students. Next slide. All right, so from the February 28th and 29th, Concept One got changed. The area P was moved into Thomas Paine, but we'll see that here on this next map. So go to the next page. This was kind of our starting point and we built on Concept One. We heard some feedback specifically where, hey, I can see my school. Should I be able to go to that school if there's a attendance battery? Different conversation when we talk about the neighborhood. So if you are going to have a neighborhood school boundary, you can see your building and you're already assigned to that building. Could we move those students back into Thomas Paine? We're able to do that and be within the metrics of the capacity over the next five years. I've already mentioned what we do with the capacity utilization. Please go to the next slide. This is the visual of that area. And so if I can just kind of highlight from my notes, the area that was area P was generally if we go south of Michigan Avenue, between that and Florida Avenue, that area, and if whoever has control, you can maybe highlight that as I'm talking. That area has been at Thomas Paine. It's in this concept moved back to Concept. Thank you so much. And then if we go to the next page, we're able to see what those projections are. And so one of the things I wanted to highlight again is with DVW, administration has indicated that having about 450 students there would be ideal with some of the student needs to be able to promote and encourage those kids to be successful. 450 would be an ideal number of kids in that building. And so when we're under the 70% utilization, that's probably when you look at the total number of kids, the number of kids that may most work optimally with the challenges and enhancements that could be happening in that building. Go to the next page. That'll get into the students that are impacted by the boundary change. And so what we've changed from the public inputs, I have a blue box around the K4 SIVC column. And that's just to bring to light, those are the number of K4 students that would be impacted with this boundary. As I highlighted in the public inputs, as you look at the column, the first column, that's where the students currently reside. As you go to the right, that would be the building that they would be assigned in this particular concept. So we're at about 21% of the population being impacted by this boundary change. Bottom table is that demographics, again, what we're showing there with the current K5 enrollment, how would that shake out within being assigned to this building and knowing that we've moved the dual language kids into the building that they would be assigned in this particular concept, which is Yankee Ridge is the dual language. Another comment to the survey, more explicitly, it is very apparent that if your building that you go to now is going to be the dual language building, you most likely supported the other concept. So in here, Concept One, if you live around Yankee Ridge, you're Concept Two because you would have a neighborhood school or Yankee Ridge. Same could be said universally when we're talking about Concept Two for Thomas Paine, wanting to be at Yankee Ridge. It's, all right. Next slide, please. All right, so revised Concept Two. Another thing, we go to the map. Another change, we even did this on the Concept One, is we made some visual changes and rumors driving this on the same, if you could point out, the railroad used to be the break when we looked at rail and we moved it up to University or 150. No students are in that area. So it was just visually instead of identifying with the railroad, identifying with the road network of either north or south of University at that location. So no students impacted. Same thing happened in Concept One. So no students impacted, same thing happened in concept one in that specific area. So concept two is the same as what was presented on that February twenty-eighth and February twenty-ninth. Go to the next page. Putting a lot of stress on you to erase things and go and be the same, so thank you. Concept two gets at the numbers, again, the same, related this back to the utilization, the star being Thomas Paine's, the dual-language. You can see the dispersment of students, saying we have three buildings, King, Lidl, and Yankee Ridge that would at one point in one of the next five years be under seventy percent utilization. Next page. Again, here on the top table, we're showing the SIBC, a little bit more than what we have in concept one, about twenty-three percent of the K-four students are impacted. And again, you can see the changes that occur with the demographics, with the current K-five being distributed to the building that they would be assigned to in concept two. Very similar. Next page, please. All right, conclusion, all right, next page. So some of the things that I'm now going to get into are the same information that we showed. And I'm trying to give you some reasons as a board, and this is from the lens of the RSP team, of the pros or cons of some of the dual languages on there. I'm not going to read each of these bullet points, but I wanted you to get a sense of some things you may see that we've identified as a pro, maybe a con as you look at it. So this is just our way of trying to understand what does the dual language mean if it's at Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine? And here, a few slides, I'll talk a little bit about where maybe some of this may be heading toward a data or perception. All right, so here we start to get into some of the data metrics to understand where there could be greater preference or positive, or maybe it's neutral between the two. So on the left-hand side, we list each of the items. So with the dual-language program and projected enrollment, you see some different bullet points under there. As you move to the right, we have concept one and we have concept two. This is, concept one is presented at the last public inputs, the revised concept one with area P at Thomas Paine. So as we look at this, we're thinking the data would best support concept one for the dual-language program and the projected enrollments and the students impacted. Some of it you can explicitly see with the data, some of it gets into the function of the building. I know there's been conversation about the categorical special education spaces that are at Thomas Paine and how that program would be very challenged to move to Yankee Ridge. So that this kind of starts to get into some of the fine tuning of which building is most appropriate and which building would have different type of disruptions for our programs that are or are not in some of those spaces. When we look at the neighborhood connectivity and the student demographics, it's pretty much an even draw. It's going to have equally, depending on where you live, positives and negatives, and so that's why we just circle both of them. It's going to depend on where you live. I live near Yankee Ridge, I likely want to support concept two for Thomas Paine being the dual-language if I'm not going to be in the dual-language program. The same could be said for concept two, I would support concept one because I would want to be in a neighborhood school at Thomas Paine if I'm not going to be in the dual-language. So again, there are opposing plans. Again, this gets back at some of the conversation that you have had at the board level for many different reasons. To try to figure out where is the best location for the dual-language. And again, it's going to come from what lens, and we're trying to get this back to some sort of data that you can have a better understanding of. Next slide, please. This is our process, here was the first read, just illustrating that the next, April sixteenth, would be when the plan is for the board to make a decision on which concept to roll forward. And again, with all of our data, we've been making the assumption that this moves forward in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Next page. All right, questions? So I know the one question that I wanted to answer before I turn this back over for more conversation that I think may help you. And I've kind of started to back this out with the previous few slides. So if we can go back to the slide where we show, this one here, there we go, page three. I want to kind of drive into some other things that as Jenna and I and the rest of the team today started to get at the question, I know the board has been wanting RSP to answer. And I'm probably not going to give you a succinct answer of choose this concept over the other concept. But I want you to understand some of the other thinking that's behind what you're seeing up on this page. And I think the first thing is that data has been the driver for these concepts. We've provided you visuals of where the students are located to that K-five heat map. We've provided you a map of where the dual-language, specifically the Spanish students are on that heat map. We've had conversation about capacity of schools, what's the maximum capacity, what's this desired capacity for each of the buildings. We've also talked about the timeline of how the changes potentially would take place in twenty-four, twenty-five. All our data shows that that's when that would take place. The second component is flexibility in this process, is there's been changes to the schedule for an additional. We've had conversation about where should the dual language be? Is it Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine? Could either of those buildings support it with the idea of where that program could grow in future years? We've had an adaptation of what occurs in those concepts, specifically concept one. We've also had multiple surveys to try to get additional feedback beyond those that could attend at any of those public input meetings. The third component is the board boundary objectives. Things that we can't change because those have been board decisions and have happened over the last couple of years. The first is that Wiley's a sixth-grade center. The second is the dual language would be consolidated to one school. The third is that we're considering the dual language either at Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine. And then the fourth was a preference of neighborhoods over socioeconomics. The next component that goes into this conversation is discussion that we've had with administration about what takes place in these buildings and how space is utilized. And so one of those you heard me mention, DPW, a goal of four hundred fifty students would be ideal for the transitivity and student need of those specific students. We've also talked about at the administrative level of having a long-lasting plan, specifically something that's put into your goals that every five years you're revisiting how the enrollment, how the programs fit within the capacity of the buildings. The next element and last element that I wanted to touch upon that goes into how to look at making this decision is the community feedback. And so we've had three community public input sessions in person, we've had two different surveys. And again, I want to thank administration for this second survey. And by saying administration, this is down at the building level as well, and probably to some of the specific teachers with the outreach to some of the groups that we did not get ample input back on public survey number one. And so I think where Jenna was trying to spell out some of those differences, it does give us a window into there are different views of which concept would be better based on where the dual language is. How that impacts what your experience is today and what that may mean with where that dual language is. But specifically, there's more support for concept one with the dual-language students, whether we're talking French or Spanish, or specifically with African-American population. Which was something that the board said we need more inputs, and I think everybody agreed along with the board, getting more input from some of these smaller subgroups. With all of that information stated, it appears that concept one has more favorable support towards some of the objectives that the district is aiming for. A caveat to all of this, there is no perfect plan, there's lots of moving parts in this process, right? We have a sixth-grade center that we're not addressing with what the boundaries are, but there's a change that's coming. We have the dual language, we have how people identify with the building and what that means for a neighborhood school. A very tough decision for the board, but I hope this capturing of the information that's on this slide and some of the thoughts that our team has been jotting down over the last couple of weeks may assist you in how you might make the decision of concept one or concept two. With that, I yield back to the board for any questions that our team might be able to answer.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, Robert. The floor is now open for questions from the board.
We did receive a lot of questions and concerns from residents in the Yankee Ridge area. And, but other parents have asked the question, and I had a chance to ask it for everybody, anyone else, but how would this division of redistricting affect the free and reduced lunch percentage at each of the schools? And would it change our ability, or the students' ability to receive free and reduced lunch? If we adopted either one of these plans?
It's overall district?
Yeah, Rob, I was going to answer that one.
Okay.
So we are a CEP district, which means everyone in our district is considered community eligible for free and reduced lunch. And Katie can share a little bit more about how we determine that number and how we get to that.
Yeah, it's a four-year cycle, I'm trying to remember, we just renewed it. But basically, if you meet a certain threshold at all of your schools, which I think sixty-five percent, and we're basically above that at every site. So we didn't have any problems at all qualifying. In fact, the last round, we didn't get a hundred percent reimbursement rate, we got like ninety-five or ninety-three. But this year, with the last round we just did, it's a hundred percent reimbursement rate. So it won't, you know, shifting the kids around in different schools isn't going to have an overall impact on our qualification for CEP.
I think that was a concern, so I appreciate hearing the answer to that, thank you.
Can we do that again? You said we just did it for this year being year one, or?
This year we're in right now as year one, and I think it's a four-year cycle.
I have a quick question, Robert. So you know, over the past six years, there's been a dramatic shift eastward with regards to, you know, where our students are coming from, in particular around the DPW area. With the goal of keeping that population under four hundred fifty, which was accomplished with this map for this year. What is going to happen, I guess with your projections with regards to over the next five years? Is there going to be growth in the neighborhood that could push those numbers north of four fifty, you know, come twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine?
Yeah, for sure, there is a lot of what I would call migration, transitivity in many of the areas of your district, but specifically on the east side. And so what we've tried to model is what that transitivity could equate to. And so there may be years where when you look at any of those tables where we're close to four fifty, or it could be like, let's say, four seventy, other years where it might be four forty. So I think what we've tried to address is that there's flexibility, the goal might be four fifty. The building could house more than four fifty, but the way the program would best function, administration has indicated four fifty would be a nice target.
Yeah, right now they're at five hundred, but if you looked at the, I forget what page it is, the current elementary projections that they show like for next year, just basically, we say this all the time, right? Like we could have seven hundred kids at that school at any point, just for twenty-four, twenty-five. They are showing six hundred and sixty-five students that just that we know about, which there are always way more than we know about. So, you know, I know people have heard me say that many times this year, that we could have seven hundred students in Dr. Williams School at any day. But we already see next year they're going to have six sixty-five just from the students we know that would be there if we didn't do this and didn't, the overflow, right? That's why we've been overflowing there for so many years, so.
Hi, so my question is related to busing. So in the concept one, I wondered how that going to affect, or how it's going to benefit the passing for either, for the community or the dual programming in Yankee Ridge? So time is one of the tools, or how is it going to be distributed in the bus?
Did you say transportation? Yeah, busing. So one of the managers from First Student has been so kind and generous to come to all of the public input sessions, even though we didn't require her to be there. And one of the things that she shared at those sessions is that right now we're sending five buses, five or six buses?
Into the same neighborhoods.
Into the same neighborhoods. So right now, we send about five buses just to Ivanhoe, and we pick up students and take them to schools literally all over the district. And I think in one of the public inputs, she said that we'd maybe be able to get away with two buses going over there for dual language, I can't remember. She, Dawn might remember, but Dawn said that in one of our.
And it's not just that, but we're overflowing so many students that are riding the bus from DPW to other schools that we're going to free up buses there. But as far as to address your question about the length of time, we have a limit. It's, you know, it's not a hard firm limit, but we try to keep all of our routes under an hour. And the changes won't affect that, in fact, we hope that it'll make routes slightly shorter. And the students that live close enough to walk now will be able to, instead of getting overflowed to other buildings.
For both concepts?
With either one.
So in particular, right, if we're looking at strictly the dual-language students who are primarily located in the area by East Perpitz Road, correct? Is there much of a difference in terms of travel time between concept one and concept two by being bused to Yankee Ridge as opposed to being bused to Thomas Paine?
I can find that out more precisely if you'd like to and get that information back to you, but I would say overall, no, their routes would still be limited to an hour or less.
So I guess this question, it doesn't go to Robert, it's more a question of if is there any estimate of what the cost in terms of capital expense to try to duplicate the amenities we've added to Thomas Paine to Yankee Ridge in case the board decides to go with concept two? Or how do we even coin about sizing that capital figure?
So one, we would have to retrofit a couple of the classroom spaces. There's sensory spaces at Thomas Paine that we would need to replicate at Yankee Ridge. There's an adaptive playground at Thomas Paine that we need to replicate at Yankee Ridge. I don't know that we have had our architect run any specific numbers for that, but we could most definitely ask him to do that if that is what the board decided to do. I mean, we'd have to have that information to be able to figure out what we would need to do to the spaces and the rooms. I don't know, Randy, if you have any other things that you know.
I don't.
Okay, okay.
So another question, I guess again, not to Robert, is what if the board decides to go with concept one, what would the plan be for the students currently in the April support program?
Oh, and then the intensive instruction program, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, I was not quite sure. So right now that, I mentioned this at one of the public input sessions. Currently, we have two classroom spaces at Yankee Ridge dedicated for the program. However, the number of students that are currently in the program is very small. I think they have five or less students right now. So depending on which So depending on which concept the board chooses and going back and looking at the target capacity of all the other schools, we've just kind of been waiting. Ms. Ladd and I have had several conversations about where that classroom or two might go, but we would have several options to consider that we will have additional classroom spaces at all of the buildings where we could relocate that program. But we have not made that decision yet. We're kind of waiting to see which concept the board chooses. Because based on which concept the board chooses, it changes the enrollment of the students, right? So like the number of students at each school is different from Concept One to Concept Two. So we kind of need that decision to be made first, and then we can make a decision around where we would be able to put the program and have the least impact on the number of students that would be going there based on the projections.
Does that answer my questions? Well, I need to ask my questions. No, I don't care. Yes, there is two questions. Maybe not for Rob, one's for the board and the other one is for the administration. So do we know where the students wanna be placed if we choose to be in Yankee Ridge? Because there's a problem in Yankee Ridge where the students that are not part of the French program wanna go.
Yes, that is, Rob maybe, or if John wants to pull back up the, are you asking for Concept One or for both?
For both.
Yes, so the map is pretty clear about where those students would be, their boundary area, how it would change. So if John wants to throw those maps up, then I'll let. So I don't know, John, if you want. Rob, if you wanna do that, so if you, or I can do it, or whoever wants to.
Yeah, whoever can, like drive on that end. So the question is, how will the students, which building they would be attending, whichever concept is approved?
Yes.
And so with the solid colors, like here's the current boundary. So there's two things that happen here. Is one with the student data between John and RSP. We would identify the students based on where they are residing, what program they're attending, and then associating them with whatever the board chooses on Concept One or Concept Two, what that building is, then there would be notification that automatically goes out to all of them. But visually, as you look at what's on these maps, the changes that are going to be apparent are along Perkins Road. We particularly have the north side, right? When we have identified where these buildings are. So in Concept One, with Yankee Ridge being the dual language, you can see how all of this starts to get associated. If you're in the Perkins Road area and you're in the dual language, we're saying you go down to Yankee Ridge in this concept. If not in the dual language, then you go to Thomas Paine. So I think the map, this is not a very granular map with lots of road labels, but that would be provided to the district so that you would get specific roads of like Florida having Michigan, all these of that. If you pull up the map, you'd be able to see it. But there's also the ability of like an address locator to type your address in to know where your boundary is. So I think there's gonna be a lot of communication that will absolutely happen.
And in general, as you can kind of see from the two maps, from kind of a higher level view, so wherever the dual-language program ends up, Lille currently has two strains of dual language, and DPW has one, and they also have students who've been overflowed. So a lot of the students would be going to Lille. So you can see here, a lot of the south Yankee Ridge students would be going to the Lille area. Some of the further south would be going to Thomas Paine. And then some of the north students would be going to Lille. And then kind of that center section would be also going to Thomas Paine.
You wanna show that for Concept Two also?
Yeah, it's a little bit further down, so bear with me, okay?
There we go.
So this is with Thomas Paine as the dual language. And a lot of those would go to Yankee Ridge in this one. And then some of the further north would still go to Lille. Let me go back.
Okay, so my second question is for the boards. Thank you for answering that. One of the, I'm nervous, bear with me, I'm tired too. So we hear a lot of voices out there saying transparency, strategy plan. And I think all goes through Wiley and the sixth grade center. I, also, we heard today, the middle school teachers, and we went there. And it was really traumatic. We were disturbed and we were meeting twice by a student dropping himself on the door. After the first one, I was just panicked. The second time was very, very panicked, I wanted to run. Sixth grade center, I really don't think is going to resolve magically or problems in there. And we are spending a lot of money remodeling Wiley as a sixth grade center. I know this is not his job because we didn't ask for, but I wonder how the numbers would be if we decide to make Wiley as a dual-language program.
I can speak a little bit to that, this for what my opinion is. I also, I mean, I have concerns with regards to the sixth grade center in particular in both of our capital budget and our operating budget. Before I would vote for putting the project out to bid, I would like to see a revised estimate of the change in operational cost for operating that building as a sixth grade center. But those two concerns, in terms of cost, in terms of the capital cost when you convert the building, and in terms of the operating cost of operating that building as a sixth grade center, are even worse if we decided to operate the Wiley building as a dual-language building. It would cost more in terms of capital budget to convert that into something large enough to support the number of students we would need in the dual-language program. And it would add at least a million dollars a year to our operating budget to operate six elementary schools again, which is something we just can't afford, in my opinion. So it's a concept that if we had the money for it, and we could reduce class sizes across the district and go to six elementary schools, I would be all for it, we just don't have the money.
Or the people.
Yeah.
I'm glad you brought that up, Sivali, because as I sat and listened to the teachers today, it's the same concerns that we heard back in October when I went to visit and talked to, I believe, fourteen or fifteen teachers from the middle school. And they had this exact same concerns and relayed the same information about safety in the hallways, safety for the teachers, and were asking for us to agree to the sixth grade center. And those were the reasons why I voted for it. And the board did decide to approve the sixth grade centers. And I hope that we're hearing from the middle school that we can continue to make improvements so those things can get better. And hopefully it will with less students in that building. It's no guarantee, but, you know, everyone wants to hear data, wants to hear how it's going to work. And we've heard data about how K-six schools aren't so much better in other communities. But in this community, in our community, I would like to see the sixth graders get the attention and build the skills that they need so that they can go on and be more successful in middle school and secondary, just like we're hearing the same thing in the kindergarten, first grade. It doesn't just start automatically in sixth grade. Some of these problems are even in middle, in early childhood and need that help transitioning from early childhood to kindergarten. If we have a K-six building, then we're not gonna have the room or the facility in order to give students the special help that they need. If we have a K-five building that would have less attendance, that we would have more space. So I understand what you're saying, but I think that we had to listen to those sixth grade teachers as well.
So just for clarity, Sivali and I met with about a dozen or so long-term UMS staff members over lunch period last Monday, so it was.
The one that happened?
Yeah. And, you know, there was a student running the hallways, you know, not during passing period, but during lunch period, who, you know, kicked the door and made very, just really, really, this app means, it was really, I can understand why a teacher would have a very hard time keeping students calm because with something like that happening, that happened again, you know, ten minutes later. It was really jarring. It's a good context to it. And those staff members, you know, it was twelve of them or so, we had voiced concerns about.
And how many were sixth grade?
I don't know. I don't know how many there were, at least two. I cannot claim that was a representative sample.
I just wanna know, are we addressing it at all as a short term?
The behavior?
Yes.
Issues? So, I think we have been working with administration this year to address the issues. I really empathize and sympathize with our UMS friends. I've been there a lot in the few weeks, in the last few weeks, and I don't know our student, the student that this happened to personally, but I know him from his elementary years. And it's horrific what happened, a hundred percent, I agree with that. And yes, it was a terrible accident. And yeah, it happened during class time when those students should have been in class. And so we've been working with admin on some different things to support staff and change culture and climate. But it's really, really hard when you heard several people come tonight and talk about the number of long-term subs. There are a lot of subs in that building. There are a lot of days when a lot of classrooms are not covered, and we have people picking up classes. We have our administrator sub quite often in that space. And so I know it sounds like I'm making excuses, but I'm not. I mean, it is really a perfect storm of lots of different reasons why it's been really hard to move the culture and climate change that we really want to move there. Having nine hundred and twenty dysregulated, not all dysregulated kids, but right? We have nine hundred and twenty students in that space. And post-pandemic, we have way more dysregulated students than I ever remember having. The level of disrespect that they talked about tonight is real. It definitely a hundred percent is real. And so, you know, disrespect, disorderly behavior, disobedience, refusal, all of those things. Unfortunately, yes, they happen in our middle school area all day long, which is why we have been so passionate about trying to bring forward a different option to be able to, Sherry said it very well. We need to do something that is gonna be a change, that is gonna be felt for years and years and years in the future. Being able to have our sixth graders in a space where we can develop them in a very different way than we do now. Our sixth graders right now, when they get to the middle school, they emulate all the behaviors that they see around them. They don't, a lot of them aren't doing some of these things when they leave fifth grade, but it doesn't take very long for them to see the things that other students do and do them. And because you have our SRSs who came tonight, we have fourteen or fifteen people trying to manage nine hundred kids in the hallway. That ratio, I haven't done the math, but it is not good. I saw an email today about the plan that our principal, principal group shared about clearing the hallways and not allowing kids in the hallways without passes. And, you know, parents have concerns about things like going to the bathroom. And one of the parent emails suggested, why don't we put an adult at every single bathroom? Do you know how many bathrooms there are in that building with nine hundred kids? We'd have to literally pull an SRS or an administrator every passing period to stand at a bathroom. It's impossible. We've been trying to manage the weed, smoking, we've been trying to manage the vaping and the things that happen in the bathroom. There are not enough adults to be in every single one of those spaces at every single passing period and to keep some of those things from happening. What we need to do is we need to help our students become better learners and just to be better students and understand those aren't things we do at school. Right now, we're at a place where that message is not getting through to the young people that we have today in the way that we've been trying to do it. So we do need to, it feels very restrictive what we're doing right now, but in, to be able to have safe hallways is necessary. So we're going to keep doing it. I know one of the teachers said today was better. We did something like this a couple of years ago when Dr. Weemel was principal. We took a whole bunch of people from Central Office, and we literally were in the building helping escort kids all over the place for weeks. And it got better, but it was exhausting. It was exhausting for the SRSs, it was exhausting for us, it was exhausting for the administrators. And it's almost untenable to do that. I mean, it was really, really hard to do. And I, I know as, you know, the administrators in this space, it's been really difficult to try to make some impactful change. And I know our teachers are trying to do the best that they can. And we're just gonna try to continue to be there to support them however we can with whatever. Like if this doesn't work and we're not able to do it in the next week or two, we'll do something else. But we have to do some things differently beyond putting a bunch of adults and having them walk the hallways. We need to change the mindset of our kids. We need to teach them to become better learners. We need to teach them that we come to school and this is what we do at school. And all of those things need to be starting to happen all the way down in elementary. By the time they get to middle school, at least right now, it's been really difficult to change those behaviors. So, so to answer your, that was a long-winded answer to your question, Lola. But I think, yes, I feel like what they're doing right now is going to help at least get the hallways safe, but there's more that needs to be done. We need to help our students be more respectful, we need to help them be more responsible, we need to help them take their, be more responsible for their learning. So there are a lot of other things that need to happen. But right now, our primary goal is to just help everyone feel safe.
And I really appreciate that, Mom, when it, because that did answer a lot.
Yeah.
But as you stated before, we did get an email, you know, just basically letting us know what went on with that. My base, my, I guess I really wanted to know as far as, like you said, the staff being concerned and not being enough staff to help with that. I just think it's a community effort.
Absolutely.
All have to step up and, parents have to talk to the children, the community has to get involved some type of way. I mean, it's a big job, so.
So you mentioned a really good point. I think no one mentioned that tonight, but I know I heard that in a few comments today, is we need to find a better way to engage our families who, for students that are experiencing these challenges, not just at the middle school, but also we had parents who came from Yankee Ridge and talked about some of their experiences. So something has to change, and we have to do something differently. I think we've been trying to do some district-level family engagement, but we need to go even deeper individually, family to family, to figure out how we can have families come partner with us to help improve not just their learning outcomes, but the students that you guys talked about who are disruptive literally all day long. I mean, one of the, one of the people that was here tonight talked about that. And if that student's doing that all day, what are they learning throughout the day? And so I think that's the piece that we need to get our parents to help us, because we can't do it by ourselves. And I know we have about a hundred and twenty, thirty folks at UMS who are trying to do it and trying to be part of the solution. But we definitely need parents and families to help, so.
What are the numbers like? I know sometimes you have kind of a small group that, in some spaces, that can wreak a lot of havoc, I guess is what some people would term it. Are we talking a really large group of students here that would fall into the category of being disruptive all day? Or is it a smaller number, or do we have any?
So we, I don't have that in front of me, I was looking at Kim. I know we collect office referrals, so we have a large number at UMS. I can't remember off the top of my head how many it is. But I know at every grade level, like sixth, seventh, and but I know at every grade level, um, like sixth, seventh and eighth grade, there are students that I was, we kind of look at it like a triangle, right? And the kids that are at the tippy top of that, um, our tiered models support that are at the top of that triangle are the kids that we're talking about. Like there are kids at UMS who are amazing, right? That eighty, eighty-five percent of our population who does all the things that they're supposed to. And they're just amazing students from the time they walk in the door, from the time they leave. But we have that five to ten percent probably at every grade level, and we do have it at every grade level, who, um, are the ones that our SRSs are basically managing all day long, that our teachers are asking support for all day long, and that our administrators are, um, supporting all day long. And so, um, I know tonight we heard that some of those students have IEPs or 504s. Um, and so legally, there are different things that kind of, um, you know, uh, we have to kind of follow their individualized education plans. And we support, put course, support some place to meet the needs, um, because they may be a special education student. But there are a lot of students who are not students that have an IEP or a 504 who fall in that category um, of that five or ten percent that we spend, enjoy our time with, who just need support. They need to be taught social skills. They need to be taught how to manage their behavior, just lots of things. Um, that, uh, we hopefully can do a better job of at elementary to kind of, and at, at the sixth grade center. So by the time they become middle schoolers, we, um, that those behaviors are more regulated. I mean, we, I was just having a conversation with one of the high school administrators today around, it used to be, you know, um, there are a lot of similarities shared today around the UHS team is, um, making a lot of change. And part of it is, you know, they're middle school administrators, so they're approaching this from a middle school approach as high school people. Um, because basically what's happened is we have high schoolers at the high school who are there, they've carried their middle school behaviors to the high school. It used to be when you got to high school, you're like, I don't do, I'm, I'm at the high school now, I don't do these things. But that's not the case anymore. You know, we have ninth graders and tenth graders, you know, doing middle school-like things because, um, we, it just, we just had to shift nationally and, um, and just socially and everywhere. And so, um, yeah, I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what, what I'm trying to get to, and I, and we don't have people lined up to work at the middle school. I mean, we just don't. And the problem that we're seeing is certainly not an Urbana problem, it's a nationwide problem. Um, but, but I'm just wondering, um, you know, I, I saw a couple of weeks ago that, um, I think one of the administrators at the middle school had created a, um, a tardy kind of contract. I don't even remember what exactly it was called, but kudos to whoever that was that did that because it's an amazing, um, document and plan. And I'm just, um, I don't know, I'm thinking out loud right now, trying to think about how we could, um, address those kids that need that level of support, that need, um, to have those kind of contracts. And I know those contracts don't always work. I mean, obviously kids are gonna do what they want to do in some cases. But how we could, um, deal with and reach those kids and try to meet the needs of those kids without necessarily punishing the eighty-five percent that are doing what they're supposed to do.
Right, yeah.
So that's always a, a concern for me. I've always, I'll just be honest because that's how I am. I've always hated the concept of the kid who's doing right's gotta be punished because of the kids who are making poor decisions. So now all of a sudden I can't go to the bathroom because, you know, this kid here wants to play in the hallway. And I get you've got to do something and you've got to try different things. I just hope that, um, in the process of trying to help the kids that really need the help, that we're not, um, continuously punishing the, the, the ones that really show up every day and do exactly what they're supposed to do. I know as a parent myself, I, I always told my kids, if you've got to go to the bathroom, you've got to go to the bathroom. I mean, um, and, and I'm just, you know, again, I'm being honest here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, just my household and my, my thought processes, I've always told my kids, you're not gonna, you're not gonna hear and hate on yourself in the classroom. So, um, I just, you know, I know that work is hard. I know that, um, there have been many calls to the community to step in and to try to help out with some of this. And we do have some great people who are able to make it during the day and who are going over to help out in the hallways and not just at the beginning of the day, but even some that, you know, have that time to dedicate more often. I would challenge some of the people that aren't in those spaces that, that do have the time, that, you know, especially being critical and maybe don't even know what a day looks like in the middle school, to just try it out for a couple of weeks, come and, come and help out. And, um, you know, the work of what you're doing to try to help the kids that need it the most. And, you know, obviously we as board members have seen several of those kids that, that need it the most. It's, it's difficult work. Um, and again, people aren't lined up, you know, I don't know. I, I know a couple of people talked about, you know, there's an abundance of people that, um, you know, can, can, can come in and help. And I, I don't, I don't see the, I don't see that myself. Uh, I don't see them raising their hand to say, I want to come into the middle school and I want to make a difference. So wherever they are, um, please talk to our administration and, and come and help out. But I just, I, I challenge, um, you know, everybody to just continue to think of those creative ways, like whoever created that, that contract and that concept of making the kids sit down and realize what not being in class does for, for all facets, getting in trouble, missing time, now your grades are down. Um, and I don't have a form in front of me, but it, it was great, so. Um, so that's my two cents. I just, I really want to sit to, to just keep thinking. I know we've got to make a quick change right now, but to keep thinking about how we can help the kids that really need it without punishing the kids that, um, are doing what they're supposed to do.
This shift in student behavior didn't happen overnight. I mean, I know, I know COVID was a, was a mitigating factor, but it, it's, it's, it's been a, it's been, it's been a gradual change. It's gotten worse over the years.
Yeah.
Fixing it isn't gonna happen overnight.
No.
I mean, I think there's, there's things we can do, we have to do in the short term to get us through the rest of this year. But this, you know, the board has just kicked off and is committed to a strategic planning process that's going to be in the fall. And this is gonna be a big focus of that as well.
Yeah.
It's one of our pillars, um, for, for one of our, our goal areas. Um, so we'll be seeking out, you know, community involvement and, and, and trying to do our best to put a path forward to improve this across the district. We're partnering with the UEA with regards to what's in our, what's in our contract, with regards to coming up with, with more, assistance of behavior, have more fidelity as well. And that's an ongoing process right now too. So there, there's, there's longer term, uh, planning that's happening as nascent now, but it's something that we have to be committed to and, and have a relentless focus on if we're gonna make progress.
Yeah, because the things that we did years ago don't work anymore.
Right.
And they just don't.
Kids are different. Their parents are different.
Absolutely. And things that UMS has tried this year, like they've done tardy sweeps, you know, where they sweep the hallways and, you know, give consequences for kids that are routinely and consistently in the hallway after the bell's rung. And, um, those things haven't been working either. And, you know, you heard a couple of staff members call for more consequences. No one wants to be more punitive, right? Like that's not why people become teachers. Um, but you're right. I think, uh, it, it is always hard for us as administrators too when you have, when, you know, you have these sweeping changes that impact every single kid, when you know most of the kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing every day. And so I think right now we're just trying to bring us to a level of safety.
Right.
And then we can, you know, kind of peel back the onion and, you know, do some things little by little. But right now, um, and, and they're right, and the fact that it took a student to, um, be hurt in this way to get us to this point, um, while it is very restrictive, it is necessary. Because the things that they've been trying all year have not been working.
Things that they've been trying for years.
Things they've been trying for years have not been working.
They related that they had tried and none of those things have worked as far as delaying the bell and having different, different times.
Oh, we've tried different bell schedules.
So that's why they, uh, suggested the sixth grade and were supporting the sixth grade center. But to go back to, you know, what we were discussing with RSP, um, I, with the data and stuff, um, um, it, it also says, I can't find it right now, but it, the, the concern about the Wiley students who are having to change it again. The differences in the two different, um, concepts would be at forty-some for option number, concept number one, and over a hundred and thirty, is that correct for concept number two? So.
Yes, to promote our page.
That's a big difference as far as how many students. I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that forty-some students would have to be changed, but, um, it'd be terrible if a hundred and thirty-some would have to be. And I, I think that number is correct. Is that right, Rob?
Uh, forty-one and one fifteen.
One fifteen, okay.
So one of the things, um, that Kim's office is already working through is our petitioning process for those students. And so, um, typically we don't make petitioning decisions, um, or we don't even open any, we, we collect petitions, um, all year. But, uh, we were gonna have a kind of early petition just for, um, whichever concept is chosen, um, where we can work specifically, uh, with those students, um, around petitioning options for them, so. So they kind of get like our early decision time, um, before everybody else would. So we can, uh, figure out what they would like to do and then, um, make decisions early for the widely impacted families and then make decisions about other petitioners after that.
Glad that was addressed.
Well, this is all valuable conversation. I mean, we don't get, you know, large opportunities to discuss things as a board. And we've got a lot to discuss, so, um, it's kind of, this conversation's kind of meandered a bit, but, um, I still appreciate it. So thank you for your questions, Savali.
You had another one, right? It looked like you were gonna.
No, I was just about to say that, um, one of the, um, one of the participants that I mentioned about social workers that maintain health for, for, um, students, and I feel like, yes, I don't think that punishing and working the same thing that we've been working is not working. Obviously, so, but I feel like it's an opportunity for creating a new program for those students where they can use their time and, and, you know, basically.
So we have been, um, we have several middle schoolers that are here at Tiger Academy. Um, and we could take, we would take more, we just don't have staff. Um, so right now, I think they are kind of maxed out on the number of, some of those very, um, in really intensive, uh, students aren't even at UMS all day. They come here for, um, we have, you know, a couple that might be here all day. And then we have, um, some that are here either half the day and then back over at UMS. And so I know that helps a lot, um, that we're able to offer that here at all, our, um, alternative program. But, uh, because some of those students have significant, um, IEP minutes and needs that can't be met here at Tiger Academy all day because we don't have, we don't have special ed teachers here all day. Um, we have to transition them back to the middle school, so, um, you know, wherever, if, if we have opportunities in the near future to add more staff here, um, that's a goal too, because I think, you're right, there are students who, nothing we're going to do is going to help the traditional learning path, uh, be what they need. Um, they need something way more individualized. And that's why we kind of started the Tiger Academy program here in the first place.
Is the, uh, Tiger Academy also doing sixth graders?
Say that again.
Um, those three.
Yeah, we take, they take all middle school, yep, sixth through twelve.
Yeah, circling back, I guess we're expected, the plan is for us to make a decision in two weeks. So is, as board members, is there any additional information that you would like from RSP or from our newspapers to help you make that decision?
I just want to know, uh, if we want to have, how we're going to support the families regardless of any concept? How are we going to do the transitions? A, a plan, a clear plan of how we want to support it? How we're going to help those kids? And how we want to help the teachers as well? Where they're gonna be placed? With each concept? Um, that's something that we can at least provide and go with aside, um.
I don't know if you want me to share those things now, but yes, we've been talking, we've been talking a lot about, um, building community and it won't be just in one or two schools. I mean, we're moving students around literally everywhere um, at the K five level. And so, yeah, so we are going to be, um, trying to help support our administrators with, uh, community building activities. Um, I think the Thomas Paine folks and Yankee Ridge folks, um, but Thomas Paine had a large number. So there were some very specific things that they did to really welcome the Wiley families in. And I think all of our schools are gonna have to be very welcoming of, um, all the new families that are coming. And, um, have some activities planned at the end of the year, um, to kind of welcome, uh, people in, give people an opportunity to, to meet teachers, walk around schools. I think those are all things that we're talking about. But I don't know, you heard us, um, talk about the new position for, um, the executive leadership position that Dr. Taylor will be taking on. Um, she's gonna be working directly with our principals because, um, we really, uh, need to help our, uh, just develop leadership in, um, some of our administrators and help, um, help them to be able to just be leaders and just be instructional leaders and do some of the really hard things and focus on being the principal. Um, and so we're really gonna work with them on ways that they can, um, just help wrap around the whole school and kind of bring everybody together as a community, so.
Any questions? Uh, again, the question is, is there any additional information you would like from RSP or from administration to help your, your decision in two weeks? Yeah, something comes to you, if you'll please contact the administration between, between now and then. And we'll also be working with our new board member to, to get that person up to speed as well. If that's it, I think we can let, uh, Robert finally go. Thank you so much for hanging, hanging out and with us, uh, through this discussion and for your, for your work with, with the district over, over these months.
Yeah, you are welcome.
Thank you so much, Rob.
Okay, um, there is no study topic tonight. And there is a call for a future special meeting one week from tonight for, uh, sub-district two vacancy forum. Uh, I guess more details on that will be announced after our, our deadline for receiving those applications, which is four thirty tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So, yeah, after, after that, so probably on Thursday we'll be making announcement regards to the forum.
So, yes, um, yeah, Tori was asking if that's, yes. Um, that is the legal women's voter, but we only will do that if we have multiple candidates.
Right.
Yeah, if we have multiple applications received. Is that what you were gonna ask?
Yes, how we're gonna handle that and also, I'm assuming that it's going to be, that new vacancy is gonna be part of the decision?
Yes, the, the, the new board member will be part of the decision.
And you wanna give all the information to that person and all the historical data?
I, we will all do our best to help that person out.
Thank you. To bring them up to speed, yes.
Those kind of like, one of the four of us, you know, um, Paul and Tori had all the information through January, February, March, made some of those hard decisions. And what we only could get was what we could observe on TV, so it's like any other new board member, I think.
I will make whatever time I can.
And we'll try to orient them. We can wait on all the board, you know, all the nuances of what it means to be a board member, but we can try to bring them up to speed as quickly as possible on the conversations we've been having about the redistricting. I think that's gonna be the most important thing to kind of help orient them on.
All right, um. Yep, it's your turn.
Okay. John, you ready?
Yep.
So, um, today at Thomas Paine, we, I think it was today, um, Thomas Paine teacher Elise Harshbarger uh, was awarded the, um, March Teacher of the Month by Rick Writings and Mix ninety-four point five. So congratulations to Elise. Um, we had a, uh, Mr. Escatell a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, was also, um, uh, recognized. So congratulations to Elise at Thomas Paine. Well deserved. Um, we also want to recognize another teacher from Dr. Williams, Stevie John. She's a kindergarten teacher, um, has been, I don't know how many years she's been there, but she's been there a very long time. She's a very well-respected, um, teacher at Dr. Williams School, one of our veterans. Um, she has, um, been recognized as one of three state finalists in the area of science for, um, the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. For um the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching, um, this is one of the nation's highest teaching honors. Um, awards are given in science, technology, engineering and math, um, the award recognizes teachers who. Who have both uh deep content knowledge of the subjects they teach and the ability to motivate and enable students to be successful. Um, our last presidential award uh for excellence winner was uh Brian Lake. Um, one of our instructional coaches who was also at Dr. Williams at that time, he was at King School. Um, and he had the benefit of going to uh Washington DC and he spent a uh several days with other. Presidential award winners, um, and spent time at the White House, so. Uh, we wish Stevie all the best, I wish we could all vote for her, um, but to make sure uh she was chosen because she is absolutely amazing, so I. Uh, we just want to congratulate her for actually just being one of the finalists whether, whether she wins or not, so. Um, summer programming, so we've been working a lot on the last few weeks to uh get information out to families around um summer programming. Uh, that will be happening throughout the district. Um, there's a lot of programming happening during the month of June, I'm not gonna read them all, um, lots of programming happening at UMS as usual. Um, we're doing something different this summer, I wanted to note, um, most of. Kind of out of all the things, several of these are things we've done for several years. Um, this year for the UMS slash program, not slash, UMS uh summer transition and UHS summer transition. Um, those programs are gonna happen the first week of August, uh, August fifth through the ninth. Um, typically we bring the sixth graders in in June and then they kind of sit around all summer and then they forget everything, right? So. Um, this year we're bringing them um in the first week of August and then our ninth graders are gonna be the focus of our transition program. Um, at the high school and so uh both buildings are really looking forward to that and everybody has already started planning. Um, and getting information, act information will be going out to schools soon, I don't think that has gone out yet, Cameron, like. So we're just kind of announcing these first. Um, the girls soccer showcase, we've talked about that already and how exciting it is to be able to do this and we encourage people to come out on um April eleventh. We play at six PM over at the University of Illinois, our UHS girls soccer team. Um, the Urbana High School bands program, um, the one hundredth anniversary celebration is coming up Saturday, April twentieth. Um, there is a lot of information, that's been out on social media about this, um, there are alumni, band members that are coming from all over the country. Former band directors will be there um to kind of have a uh. Showcase and have a, a performance together and then we will be dedicating the UHS band room following that with a reception on the twentieth. Uh, UHS candidate forums, so uh recently uh through the primary elections. Uh, leading up to that, a UHS social studies teacher Levi Molenor, Levi, uh, Molinar, Molin Power. Um, had a candidate forum with our students, so if you look at this picture, there were a lot of students who came. Um, and participated in the candidate forum, um, juniors and seniors were invited to learn more about voting. And the voting process to register to vote, so um this was his idea and something that he and uh Joe Salava uh kind of. Came up with on their own and it was a great opportunity to really encourage and motivate young voters. Um, so that happened. And um here's the information about the board vacancy. Again, um, applications will be accepted until tomorrow, April third at four thirty. Um, if we have at least two candidates, uh, we will be hosting the candidate forum on Tuesday, April ninth. Um, and it'll be right here in the boardroom at five thirty PM. So we'll share more information after um, after tomorrow, um, and. Uh, share information with the candidates if we have an additional candidate to um participate in that. Kindergarten registration, again, uh, we normally have had kindergarten registration a little earlier in April, but we pushed it back intentionally. Um, kind of making sure that our parents that come that night know what concept where we can kind of report to them on the map and say, here's where your kiddo's gonna go. Um, so that's gonna happen um after you guys vote on the sixteenth. And um that'll be at Lincoln Square, ten thirty to five thirty, we have, we have people from the buildings there, we have administrators there. Uh, we have folks from. Every single program there to uh welcome our new Urbana families and. And existing Urbana families that might have a new kindergartner um coming to school for the first time, so April twenty-fourth. Uh, we also have been planning for online registration, um, we, we're also pushing that to open um after the board has made a decision around. Concept one or concept two, um, John has been working with his team, so um as soon as we know which concept we're gonna be moving forward with. Um, they're already kind of pulling together and um as Rob said in his presentation, you know, we know who the students are. We know what schools they go to, we know where they live, so it's just gonna be a matter of helping um kind of pool people in the places where they would be moving to and um. Making sure our secretaries um have all that information so we can begin to open online registration for our returning families um on May first.
There were two FOIA's processed, with the first one Tom Schroder requesting any unreleased recordings from the February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth public input sessions for against. Redistricting and a second from Tom Schroder requesting all text messages sent or received by the superintendent that included. Public employees or officials containing public information or otherwise pertaining to public business, the term text messages is inclusive of SMS, MMS, iMessage. Good Chat or any similar sort of instant message services that may have been used. Since two months of records were denied, only January twenty twenty-four is being requested. Uh, board reports.
I just wanna send a congratulations out for our CU Optimus Club essay contest winners, um, Urbana made a full sweep. Um, of our essay contest this year. Um, Hudson Cody received first place, Avalon Ogalski received second place and our own Dominica Turner received third place in our essay contest. Hudson moves on to the district level. Which is gonna be middle of April, um, for a chance to win twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship. We also had a first place winner for our CU Optimus Club or rhetorical contest, which. Um, was our former ambassador, Michael Turner. Uh, Michael um moved on from our local contest to the district contest where he won first place. Which includes a twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship. He now moves to the regional competition, which also has an opportunity for another twenty-five hundred dollar scholarship and if he makes it from that level. Um, the possibility is for a fifteen thousand dollar scholarship to that next level, so. Michael has done well over the years, he has placed every year, um, this is his third competition. Um, so he's really racking up scholarship money to help him with his college education and. Um, we are excited about the great things that our Urbana kids are doing and. Um, you know, to get up in front of a group and um and do a, an oratory speech is not easy. There are pretty strict limitations on the timing and all of those different pieces, so. Um, kudos to Michael for taking that on and what such a good job, so. Root him on, root Hudson on, both of them, um, middle of this month will um go to that next level.
It's uh prom season, like UHS is having its prom on April thirteenth, so before uni then. Um, so everybody have fun and, and be safe. So one question I have though for board members is, you know, it seems like the year is kind of winding down here, what's the, the plan for our next year's student ambassador?
Oh, so that usually happens in April, um, and I have a committee of people I'll reach back out to, um. There's a large group at UHS that kind of starts that process. Um, and yeah, so we usually do it in the month of April and May and we'll interview them, we'll go through the whole interview process. They have to apply, there's an application process, um, but then we will notify them and um. Dominica's a senior, Paulina is a junior and so we've talked about kind of trying to keep at least one person rotating in and out. Um, so I'll talk with the committee group about that from UHS again, so.
Any other board reports? Chair within entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Summer.
So moving to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.